Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting Agenda. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Before we get started, I wanted to state too, if you're here to speak on item 8C1, the standard, please note that the applicant has submitted a letter on June 25th to the city requesting to withdraw their application. Since the application for the standard project has been withdrawn, the second and final public hearing will not be heard, and no votes will be taken on this item this evening. So if you're here to speak on the other items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council and I will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. And now I'd like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council was considering in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you very much. We're now going to turn to item number four, which are our meeting minutes, and tonight I'll be assisted by Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Hodge?
I move to approve item 4A.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge to approve item 4A1. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Come on, Joel. Come on, Joel.
I'll take a roll call for you. All right, and that item passes unanimously seven to zero. Next up, we have item 4B, Acceptance of Board, Commission, and Committee Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, I move to approve to accept items 4B1 through 4B4.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item five, Reports and Announcements. I have a number of announcements this evening, and if the council would like to join me up front, that would be fantastic. mics here at my disposal. So first up, we have item 5A1, 2024 Bike Hero Award. This year, let you everybody know first and foremost, the Tempe Bike Hero Award recognizes individuals and organizations that aid in increasing awareness of bicycling and promoting biking as a viable mode of transportation in Tempe. This year, the Tempe Transportation Commission selected two organizations as the 2024 Bike Hero. The first is the McLean Talk High School Bike Club. So founded in 2023 and guided by teachers Sarah Silverman and Jason Hill, the club beats every Friday, engaging students in activities centered around bicycle maintenance, safety, and community service while teaching practical hands-on skills. The club's mission is to repair and build bicycles for both enjoyment and as a vital mode of transportation, particularly for under-resourced groups within our community. Donated bikes are fixed up and given to the Welcome to America Project, which is an organization that provides refugees with much-needed transportation. Members also participate in events like bike scavenger hunts, bike rodeos, Tempe Pedal Palooza, and promote safe cycling while repairing numerous bicycles, hosting fun safety education activities for high school students, and supporting youth educational activities. By demonstrating the use of bicycles as a significant mode of transportation among students, the club supports the city's environmental goals and promotes cycling as a practical daily activity. Congratulations, and at this time, I want to make sure that you're all here, everyone here? Perfect, look at that. You're going to come in and join for a photo, but I'm going to hand you this really cool piece of artwork here to commemorate this win. All right, the other recipient of the 2024 Bike Hero Award is the Broadmoor Elementary School Bike Bus. Led by community members Kendra Florrie and Hannah Moulton-Balek, and supported by neighborhood parents, the Broadmoor Bike Bus was created to raise bicycle awareness and promote safety for students traveling to school. The Broadmoor Bike Bus occurs monthly and attracts parents and kids from all over the neighborhood who enjoy biking to school while encouraging a safe environment to do so. In order to encourage other students to ride their bicycle to school, they have also partnered with Tempe Bicycle Action Group to host bike rodeos and other community bicycling events. The Bike Bus is meant to demonstrate the importance of bicycle safety and infrastructure in our city as a critical element of our multimodal and sustainable transportation system, especially for the kids in our community. So congratulations, and at this time, I welcome Kendra Florrie and Hannah Moulton-Balek and their wonderful children to receive this award. Couple more things here I got going on. So item 5A6 is our 2024 Community Survey. So because the Tempe City Council values your ongoing involvement in our community, we're requesting your assistance in providing input on the annual Tempe Community Survey. The survey is available now through July for you to share your thoughts on a wide range of city services, including public safety, parks, recreation, economic development, and code enforcement. Your input helps us to set priorities and continue to improve our services. The survey is anonymous and confidential, and results from the survey will be available this coming November, but for more information, please contact the Strategic Management and Innovation Office. Next up, item 5A7, City of Tempe Board, Commission, and Committee Meeting Reappointments and Appointments. So I want to make sure to read these following names. So I'd like to congratulate someone we all know, Councilmember-elect Nikki Amber on her appointment to the City of Tempe Audit Committee, which will take effect after she is officially sworn in as a council member at the swearing-in ceremony this coming Monday, July 1st at 6:00 PM. Congratulations also go to the individuals outlined in 7A1 on the agenda and displayed on the slides that you'll see on their reappointments or new appointments to the City of Tempe Audit Committee, Development Review Commission, Fire and Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Boards, Industrial Development Authority, Joint Review Committee, Judicial Advisory Board, Parks Recreation Golf and Double Butte Cemetery Advisory Board, and Sustainability and Resilience Commission. On behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank these people and the many other Tempe residents and community members who serve on the city's 28 boards and commissions. We are grateful to have engaged individuals who are willing to take time away from their own busy lives and family and friends to make a difference in the city where they live or work. We thank you for your dedicated service to our community, and for those in the audience currently or for those people watching at home right now, if you're interested in learning more about Tempe's boards and commissions and would like to apply to serve on one, please visit tempe.gov/boardsandcommissions or call the city clerk's office at 480-350-8242. With that, I'm going to move then to item 5A2, and I'd like to see if I could get Councilmember-elect Amber to join us up here for this one. This is because this was a suggestion that she made to me, so I wanted to make sure, and I got to be very honest, the first time I ever had Word of Mouth Grill was because of Councilmember-elect Nikki Amber, because she kept telling me at this fantastic barbecue place at McLean Talk and Elliot, and so I had to try it, and so, thank you to her for bringing this to my attention and to many other people's attention. But this is a proclamation for the folks at Word of Mouth, and I'd like to see, Demetrius, can you come up here and join me as well? So this proclamation reads, "Whereas Word of Mouth Grill, founded by pitmaster Demetrius, his wife Jackie, and their son Giovann, began with a passion for bringing people together through the joy of food, hosting countless gatherings for friends and family. And whereas inspired by the encouragement of loved ones, Demetrius and his family established Word of Mouth Grill LLC in 2011, dedicating the first few years to crafting and perfecting unique dry rubs, barbecue sauces, and an outstanding menu. And whereas after five successful years of catering, Word of Mouth Grill opened its restaurant in January of 2019, providing South Tempe with a casual, modern dining experience renowned for its delicious food and inviting atmosphere. And whereas Word of Mouth Grill has consistently earned high praise, maintaining a 4.5-star rating on Yelp with over 440 reviews, at a 4.6-star rating on Google with over 375 reviews, along with an A rating from the Health Department reflecting their commitment to excellence and quality. And whereas in 2024, Word of Mouth Grill was honored by being named to Yelp's Top 100 Barbecue Spots in 2024, ranked number 72 in the nation, recognizing their tender brisket, succulent pulled pork, and overall exceptional barbecue as among the best in America. And whereas pitmaster Demetrius has gained widespread recognition, including appearances on AZ Family News Station in February 2024 and AZ Family Good Morning Arizona for National Wing Day in July 2023 showcasing his culinary expertise and passion for barbecue. And whereas Word of Mouth Grill was honored when Mayor Cory Woods named the restaurant as one of his top three favorite Tempe restaurants in 2021, recognizing the restaurant's exceptional contributions to Tempe's culinary landscape and further highlighting its popularity in the community. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare May 22nd, 2024 as Word of Mouth Grill Day in Tempe, Arizona." Oh, and actually, two, they are additional. All right. Next up here, item 5A3, Kathy Stevens' Lifetime of Service Recognition Proclamation. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas Kathy Stevens has worked tirelessly to make the community of Tempe a better place for all through her contributions to youth at local schools in the spirit of human services in Tempe. And whereas Kathy was honored with the Daily Point of Light Award and recognition of her volunteerism with the Tempe Community Council Threads Program, becoming the 7,826 Point of Light. And whereas since Threads inception in 2009, Kathy has been leading this crucial initiative dedicated to providing all students with essential resources such as clothing, school supplies, and hygiene products at no cost to help them complete their high school education. And whereas she has been a crusader for Tempe's youth through her extensive work with Threads, inspiring thousands of youth to reach their full potential while also contributing to the program's success. She has dedicated over 1,000 hours of volunteer services, supporting 3,440 student visits, and providing 12,895 items since the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year. And whereas Kathy was recognized as the 34th Don Carlos Humanitarian for her charitable service work through the Quanis Club of Tempe, Tempe Impact Education Foundation, East Valley Boys and Girls Club, the Centers for Habilitation, Tempe Community Council, the Assistance League of the Valley, and the Friends of the Tempe Center for the Arts, demonstrating that she is a committed advocate for the city of Tempe and the values of this community. And whereas the city of Tempe is grateful to Kathy for going above and beyond in her volunteering efforts by establishing meaningful connections with each student, making a substantial impact on their daily lives. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare June 4th, 2024 as Kathy Stevens' Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona." Next up, I'd like to bring up with me our Chief Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Tom Dunzing. So Tom is retiring from the city of Tempe a week from tomorrow on July 5th, and this is his final council meeting this evening. But I just want to make sure to say, and I think we all, I know we all echo this as council members, how incredible Tom has been to the city of Tempe. I know we're all going to have comments for him at the end of the meeting. I think he just spotted some people in the audience that he didn't know were going to be here. I could totally see a look on his face was like, uh-oh. But Tom is a truly incredible man, who's been an incredible champion and steward of the city of Tempe's finances. He's also been a longtime Tempe resident and has also told all of us he will continue to be active and involved as a private citizen as well, but he's simply an incredible person, and you will hear more about this incredible man during item number nine this evening, which are our council announcements. But with that said, I want to make sure to read this proclamation, and do any members of Tom's family want to come and join me up here?
Yes.
So this proclamation reads, "Whereas Tom Dunzing, in his role as Chief Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, has consistently demonstrated fairness in all aspects of his work, whether addressing budget questions, resolving employee issues, or responding to residents' inquiries. And whereas Tom Dunzing has demonstrated exceptional dedication and commitment to our organization, serving as a role model and leader through his exemplary work and positive attitude. And whereas Tom has consistently gone above and beyond in his duties, contributing significantly to the success and growth of our organization through innovative ideas and collaborative efforts. And whereas Tom's professionalism, integrity, exceptional work ethic, and reliability have garnered him the respect and admiration of colleagues, stakeholders, and the community. And whereas Tom has often expressed his deep connection to Tempe, having attended college at ASU, has worked for the city for many years, has resided in Tempe for many years, and has raised his two children in this community. And whereas Tom and his wife like to bike throughout Tempe, and they have been known to occasionally visit a Tempe iconic establishment, Four Peaks Brewing Company, for a cold kilt lifter. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare July 5th, 2024 as Tom Dunzing Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona." is for our good friend, four-term, 16-year council member, Joel Navarro, whose final meeting is this evening. We have a proclamation for him, and once again, in item number nine, which are our council announcements, he's being joined by his wife Stephanie and his mother Stephanie. I can't make that up.
When I call them both mom, that's embarrassing.
So I want to make sure to read this once again, and you're going to hear a lot more about Councilmember Navarro this evening during council announcements, so I wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. But I also want to make sure that I can give you a little something here that I think might be kind of cool to hold up. Look, I couldn't read the proclamation without him holding that, you know? You can only keep a secret for so long. So this proclamation reads, "Whereas City of Tempe Councilmember Joel Navarro has served the city of Tempe with distinction for an outstanding 16 years, marking him as the longest-serving official on the city's governing body. And whereas Councilmember Navarro has been a trailblazer as our only Hispanic council member, contributing to the diversity and inclusive representation within our city's leadership. And whereas alongside his council duties, Joel Navarro has demonstrated unwavering commitment to public service as the current Deputy Fire Chief of Phoenix Sky Harbor and as a paramedic firefighter with the Phoenix Fire Department since 1995. And whereas during his tenure, the city of Tempe has achieved significant milestones, including enhancements to our police and fire departments, ensuring the safety and security of all residents, initiatives to strengthen neighborhood ties and improve local amenities, expansion and upgrades to parks and recreational facilities, and tireless efforts to address housing affordability and improve access to quality housing. And whereas Joel Navarro's tenure has been marked by a spirit of collaboration, working hand in hand with fellow council members, city staff, and residents to achieve these significant improvements, and a deep commitment to the values of honesty, fairness, integrity, and service to the Tempe community throughout his entire career. And whereas the city of Tempe is grateful to Joel Navarro for his friendship, hard work, and steadfast dedication to the city, and we extend our best wishes for his future endeavors. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare June 27th, 2024 as Joel Navarro Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona."
I got more stuff to send you. I'm going to do that. I shouldn't do that. Thank you.
Just a note here, I'm going to ask our city manager, Rosencosty, for any reports or announcements right before we get to item nine this evening. So with that said, I'm going to move forward here to item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speaker cards may also be filled out via the city's website at tempe.gov/clerk no later than 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. For those appearing virtually, a speaker card must be filled out no later than 2:00 PM the day of the meeting in order to appear. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers choosing to not appear in person or virtually may provide their written comments to council prior to the meeting for their review. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal
Hindus continue to have immense contributions in the field of medicine, science, and technology with leadership roles in flagship companies across the country. However, over the past decade, there have been many documented instances of premeditated anti-Hindu hate crimes throughout the country. One out of three American Hindu students reported that they had been bullied in school for their religious beliefs, according to the Hindu-American Foundation's 2015 Study on Bullying and Bias Against Hindu Students. In July 2022, a report released by Rutgers University titled "Anti-Hindu Disinformation: A Case Study of Hindu-phobia on Social Media" detailed how hate messages on social media translate into real-life threats for people of the Hindu faith. Two attacks occurred in August 2022 when anti-Hindu activists twice broke into the grounds of a Hindu temple in Richmond Hill, New York, and repeatedly took a sledgehammer to a statue of Mahatma Gandhi while repeating anti-Hindu slogans. Between December 2023 and January 2024, six Hindu temples were attacked and desecrated in California. In May 2024, the California Civil Rights Department grudgingly admitted after a year-long study that antisemitism and anti-Hindu hate are the two most common hate crimes in the state. As part of this vibrant, diverse community, I implore you to work together to urge our members of Congress to support House Resolution 1131, which highlights this issue. Your support will strengthen this great nation of ours and the values for which we all stand. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have, next speaker here is Declan Rankin-Jarden. Madam Clerk, anyone in the virtual audience?
Yes, he is.
Wonderful. Yes, okay, please state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, it can.
Good evening. Okay, amazing, thank you. So yes, my name is Declan Rankin-Jarden. I am a resident of Canada, actually, but I'm representing a company called Alveel. It is an urban beekeeping company that operates across 40 cities in the USA. What I am proposing is purely an amendment to the current article in Chapter 21, New Systems and Property Enhancement, which would just amend and in fact, permit urban beekeeping done under very strict regulations. And so, yes, I could go, I wouldn't want to take up too much of your time, but basically, this is something we proposed before in metropolitan areas, and the goal is really to allow urban beekeeping in a safe and secure manner, with the goal of connecting people to nature, encouraging pollinators, creating habitats for all pollinators. And so, this would just be one of the many ways of doing that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, appreciate it. The next speaker I have is John Forssey. Is Mr. Forssey in the virtual room?
I do not see him, but I do see our next one, Ann Till.
Okay. Then I will move on, I will leave the Forssey one for later, for the second part of our public appearances at the end. Ms. Till, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Ann Till, a Tempe resident. I just wanted to talk about the Future Work Study agendas, things that I don't see there, and one is vacant properties, that was discussed in March, but wondering what the status is. And I also want to point out that Tempe has substantial numbers of infinitely vacant lots and homes, they stick out like a sore thumb in some areas of town. These properties are missed opportunities for housing, and they often dilapidate the city and neighborhoods with frequent code compliance tickets. To understand the impact, please start tracking them, both vacant lots and homes, and given the idea that the city is landlocked and housing is invaded, it's data that the city should be very aware of at all levels. Two, update to the latest, can we get a status on the update to the latest International Building Code and the status on Green Building Code? Voluntary, being voluntary in the transition to get it to be required, what is the plan and what has happened since last fall? And could planning provide the impacts for the recently signed Middle Housing Bill, HPHB, I think it is, 2721? So other thing, bond elections, could we please have public information meetings for all three bonds so that we understand them? Third, ADUs, I missed speaking, but I generally agree, and we do need to get something out by the end of the year. And I do like the idea of seeing a separate policy or including the policy in guest quarters because it's confusing to have it separate. And then, one of the big issues was parking, and I want to propose that as an alternative that we just make all street parking mandatory, like south of the six, or north of the 60, because the parking's getting harder and harder in some areas for two-way traffic, it's actually not safe. And it's also, you know, then just give every resident maybe two parking tags to park in front of their house. This is in line with survey comments from both those who wanted to see extra, you know, on-property parking spots and those saying that they weren't needed because people take transportation. And that would put the responsibility of parking onto the property owner and facilitate street safety, and it also would support alternate methods of transportation. So, the other thing on the ADUs is that there's something about two-story additions, and I'd like to see a policy that ensures like if somebody wanted to build a two-story next to my house, I have solar panels, and I have a lot of existing gardens, that would be really impacted by a second-story shading if it were in, you know, depending on how they located it. And then I had a concern on ADUs about tour capacity.
I'm sorry, Ms. Till, I'm sorry, that's time.
Okay, that's fine, I'm good, I'm almost done, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
The next speaker I have is someone who I definitely recognize here, whose name is on one of my previous certificates here, Carla Reese. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm a little short for these microphones.
I have that problem all the time.
It's wonderful to see you all. First, I want to give a quick congratulations to Kathy, Tom, and Joel, thank you all for your service. I reside in 85282 in the city of Tempe, but I'm here tonight as the incoming president of the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association. I want to highlight the strong representation of the city of Tempe in our association. Your clerk's team is outstanding, with Eric, Nicole, and Elaine serving the community at a stellar level. Your clerk, Kara, has served as the Chair of our AMCA Membership Mentoring and Region Leader Committee for several years. I recently met your new deputy clerk, Mike, while I was presenting at the ASU Institute, great addition to the team. Rounding out this all-star roster is Karen Doncovio, who's not here tonight, apparently she's on vacation, I just found out. And I'm proud to announce that she has been awarded the Assistant Clerk of the Year for the state of Arizona by the AMCA Executive Board. Those who nominated Karen have asked to remain anonymous, I'm their speaker, but I will read the nomination for the record and provide a copy to Kara for the minutes packet. To be considered for selection as Assistant or Deputy Clerk of the Year nominees must meet several qualifying criteria, including three years of service in their current role. Karen's nomination was thoroughly vetted, along with others, and her fellow AMCA committee members from across the state spoke highly of her contributions, her teamwork, and her work ethic. The AMC Executive Board unanimously voted to recognize Karen Doncovio as the Assistant Clerk of the Year. She will receive her award at the July 23rd Annual Business Meeting for the AMC Annual Conference. And this is from her nomination. "In 2019, amidst turnover in key positions such as the Assistant City Clerk, a long-vacant Deputy City Clerk role, and the retirement of the City Clerk, the incoming City Clerk faced a pressing need for skilled personnel. Recognizing this challenge, one of the Deputy City Managers proposed a solution, borrowing talent from another department. Karen came highly recommended and willingly accepted the voluntary assignment, seamlessly balancing her responsibilities between the Clerk's Office and her ongoing duties in human resources. Despite the swift transition, she rapidly familiarized herself with the diverse services offered by the Tempe City Clerk's Office. Her contributions were invaluable in maintaining high service standards for public records requests, addressing general inquiries, election processes, and ensuring the timely publication of agendas. Moreover, she played a pivotal role in coordinating efforts across all city departments to compile the Essential Records Report, which is a crucial submission required by the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records every five years. After her unanimous selection by the hiring panel for the permanent Assistant Clerk role, she embarked on a journey to immerse herself into the realm of municipal clerkship, actively engaging with the AMCA and contributing to various committees. Her pursuit of knowledge led her to attain certifications such as a Certified Municipal Clerk," I'm almost done. "On and on, but in the end, she provides ongoing professional support to members across the state through her work with the AMCA on the Records Management Committee, the Legislative Committee, and the Campaign Finance Committee. Her unwavering professionalism and dedication resonate in her contributions to the community, her colleagues across the state. She stands as a beacon of leadership and inspiration, embodying excellence in her role as Assistant City Clerk." So congratulations, Karen, wherever you are, maybe you're watching, catch the video later, and congratulations, the city of Tempe, for being recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, always good to see you, thank you so much. And congratulations to Karen. The next speaker I have this evening is Matt Schmel. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Matt Schmel, I'm a Tempe resident. Vice Mayor Adams, Councilmember Navarro, Mr. Woods, Keating, Ms. Shin, Garland, and Hodge. I'm speaking again on behalf of Buena Vista, Calle de Cabos, and Sumner Farms neighborhoods. Last month, about two dozen Tempees spoke before this council, asking you to do your job and enforce the city code and the 1995 approval conditions for the Shady Lane Estates, conditions signed off on and approved by the 1995 city council. Our reward for asking to do your job and to not send this issue to court was having process server at our doors, serving each of us with a summons telling us we were being sued by the city of Tempe. Interestingly, the only people served on this lawsuit were those who spoke against taking this issue to the courts at the last council meeting. The phone calls and emails have been many and frantic, people have been afraid to open their doors, they are afraid they are in danger of losing money and property, they are afraid they can't leave town, those out of town are afraid of what's happening here. Well, they are out of town for work or vacation, they are afraid that the courts could award monetary damages, which could happen, because Tempe can't control what Mr. Nerwin and the Shady Lane HOA will do in court because of you. Tempe citizens don't deserve to be sued and dragged into court because this council didn't have the courage or ethics to do its job. Tempe citizens are experiencing the fears and uncertainty of being sued because of this council. The immediate financial cost to us starts with a $20,000 attorney's retainers fee, and if we attempt to muddle through ourselves, it's $245 per person just to be able to file with the court that we disagree with your complaint. And these are just starting amounts. Attorneys have advised us this could balloon to hundreds of thousands of dollars to the citizens you just sued, because this council wouldn't do its job. Did anybody here even think of the financial cost to us? The emotional cost to your Tempe citizens is far worse: fear, anger, sleepless nights, uncertainty, all because you were afraid and unwilling to do your job. Did any of you think about that? Only two of you voted against the resolution to sue your own citizens. The rest of you voted to sue your own citizens and cause us financial loss and emotional distress. Your actions are ill-advised and ill-considered, suing your own citizens for asking to do your job, shameful."
Thank you very much. Next speaker I have this evening is Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Mario Martinez, I live in Tempe. I was injured for life because of a DUI driver in Tempe. Years later, I was arrested and charged by Tempe for multiple DUI charges, which were so legally insipid, the prosecutors never took the charges to trial. Accordingly, I was able to get a unique perspective on the law enforcement aptitude of the Tempe Police and Prosecutors who work under Mayor Corey Woods. Tempe Prosecutor William Burke supervised prosecutor Alan Witt, who was assigned to my cases. On November 17th, 2010, when he was the Mesa Prosecuting Attorney, Mr. Burke gave an interview about DUIs to the Awatuki Foothills News. In the article, Burke attributes more DUI arrests for prescription drugs to, quote, "doing better police work, including training for drug recognition experts known as DREs." The DRE program is designed by the International Association of Chiefs of Police and is run through the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, which is part of the US Department of Transportation. During my arrest, Officer James Watts originally accused me of abusing alcohol, arrested me for, quote, "driving well intoxicated," and stated he would test me for alcohol. In Cory's jail, across the street, when Watts saw that my blood alcohol level was zero, Watts immediately changed his story and then stated that I was impaired to the slightest degree due to my medical condition at the time. In his subsequent investigation, Sergeant Tim Spurret agreed with Watts and also admitted that he nor Watts were DREs. The DRE protocol specifically states that prescription drug DUIs need to be investigated by competent DREs, which Watts and Spurret are not. Certain medical conditions that I have also require further DRE evaluations. The officers provided no evidence that they have more DUI expertise than the nationally-recognized DRE experts which Tempe prosecutor Burke told the press were so vital. Under Corey Woods, the professional losers Burke, Witt, Watts, and Spurret irrefutably proved their professional DUI enforcement ineptitude at Tempe taxpayers' expense when they did not even take my charges to trial. This clearly demonstrates a reason why DUI drivers are free to injure and sometimes murder people in Tempe before they get caught by the police. This official conduct poses a grave danger to our public and has still yet to be effectively addressed by Corey Woods."
Okay, I'm sorry, time's up.
Yeah, I know.
Next speaker is Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
My name is Darlene Justice, this is a quick statement. Mr. Navarro, hi, you are going to be so missed. You have done so many great things in the city, you are a great councilman, you are a great friend. I've been places with my husband, in the theater, and to tap on the shoulder, and there you are, saying hi, out in the park. You reach out to everyone, you say great things about your mom, you have great respect for your mom and your wife, but you've really meant a lot to the city.
DRE experts which Tempe Prosecutor Burke told the press were so vital. Under Cory Woods, the professional losers Burke, Witt, Watts, and Spurret irrefutably proved their professional DUI enforcement ineptitude at Tempe taxpayers' expense when they did not even take my charges to trial. This clearly demonstrates a reason why DUI drivers are free to injure and sometimes murder people in Tempe before they get caught by the police. This official conduct poses a grave danger to our public and has still yet to be effectively addressed by Cory Woods.
Okay, I'm sorry, time's up.
Yeah, I know.
Next speaker is Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name in place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Darlene Justice. This is a quick statement. Mr. Navarro, hi. You are going to be so missed. You have done so many great things in the city. You are a great councilman. You are a great friend. I've been places with my husband, in the theater, and to tap on the shoulder, and there you are, saying hi, out in the park. You reach out to everyone. You say great things about your mom. You have great respect for your mom and your wife. But you've really meant a lot to the city. You've meant a lot to the citizens and that. You listen to us. You know, that's really great. And I just want to thank you so very much for your years of service. We'll miss you very much. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name in place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kim Gaffney Loza, North Tempe. And Joel, you're going to have to listen to it again. I can't tell you how much we appreciate and are going to miss you. Miss you popping in on meetings. Miss you being willing to listen whenever we have an issue. Miss your expertise and your passion on the council. I wish you all the best. You're going to make a great supervisor, and I hope people appreciate that. I wish I could vote for you. Unfortunately, I'm in the wrong area to vote for you, but I know you'll do a great job. And I didn't know I was going to have to say this. I didn't know that Assistant Deputy City Manager Dunzing was going to retire. We will also miss him. He not only has kept the city on a firm basis, but he's also always been able to explain our finances to the public in such a way that we understood them. So both of you are going to be missed. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And the last card I have is from Jana Lynn Grineo. Please come forward, state your name in place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Jana Lynn Grineo. I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona, for over 30 years, and I have three things, and I hope I stick to those three things. Number one, thank you, fellow Meyer Park resident and fellow Kiwanis Club of Tempe member, for her many years of dedicated service, and thank you for that recognition. And three, the Fourth of July, it's on us. So I want to encourage everybody here and everybody that you know to buy tickets, buy VIP tickets. It's going to be a fantastic show. It's, we're back at the lake, and we're back at the lake with the fireworks show, fabulous fireworks show produced by the Kiwanis Club of Tempe with the partnership of Tempe and also Activated Events who's doing this. So I want to encourage everybody to go. Live music, it's a good time, go early. Public transportation, things for kids. Tell everybody you know, and know that every dollar of the net proceeds goes to kids. It goes to children here in the local community. So if you can't go, become a friend of Kiwanis Club of Tempe, and if you go to tempefourth.com, you'll find out how to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. I've got one more speaker here that I know of, Rob Ferraro. When it went to the end? Okay, we'll do it at the end. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the council? If so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. I will take a look in the audience. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. I'm going to move things around just a little bit this evening because we've got some guests who are here, and I want to make sure that they don't have to be here for the entirety of the meeting if they don't choose to be. But I'm going to go here to Item 8A1, which is to adopt a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement to acquire ownership of improved properties at the addresses of 1811-1859 North Scottsdale Road in Tempe, Arizona. Is he Mike DiDimitico, our Economic Development Director?
Mike DiDimitico, Economic Development Director. We're here before you tonight. The city's requesting approval of the resolution authorizing mayoral authority to execute a purchase agreement at a point in the near future, we hope. This is in response to the needs of the North Tempe neighborhood. They've spoken loud and clear, and we've been working with them to try and affect this purchase of a shopping center at the southeast corner of McKellipsen Rural Roads, commonly known as Food City Plaza. The purpose would be to enable a redevelopment of that project into a mixed-use project that would include affordable housing, high-density housing, police station, a new police station, and training facility, and a new modern grocery store that would all be a part of the site when redeveloped. We're coming to you before the deal is completely negotiated and buttoned up because we want to continue the momentum that we currently are experiencing on this acquisition, and we don't want to lose any momentum while we're taking our summer break for council meetings. Very excited about the potential. I feel very positive about our ability to come to an agreement that's going to be good for our city and especially this North Tempe neighborhood. Before I take questions, I just, I feel it's important, I want to give a few thank-yous. First of all, to the North Tempe residents and the leadership there that have spoken to us for all these many years, telling us what's needed. Jack Sellers, Maricopa County Supervisor, instrumental in bringing some of the money to help the acquisition, and specifically the housing component. Michael Pollak, who has owned the shopping center that we're currently negotiating to acquire. He's been a great partner with the city, owns quite a few properties besides this one that we all frequent. Johnny Basha, who now is an executive with Rayleigh Supermarkets, who is the owner of the Food City Plaza, who has been working with us on this transaction. Our Police Department, who is planning to put a brand-new police station in this neighborhood and is a part of the development. And last but not least, our Health and Human Services Department. Tim and Irma are working very hard to find the funds to help us pull things like this off. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike. Really appreciate it. Any questions from council? Vice Mayor?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm glad that the North Tempe residents have come forward. They are near and dear to me as I used to be a resident of North Tempe. And I'm just happy to see this happen, and I want to thank Michael and Jack for your efforts to making this happen and just working with us. It's really, it's going to be a great project. So thank you in advance of that, of your project. And thank you for the presentation, very clear, and I'm looking forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Thank you so much. Anyone else on council with any further comments or questions? All right, with that said, thank you, Mike. I've got a few cards here since this was pulled from the agenda. I've got three, actually. The first speaker I have this evening is Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for your work on this. North Tempe Neighborhood Association, the citizens of North Tempe, all of us have looked forward to this to happen. I know that it's still in negotiations. I've known Michael Pollak for a long time. We became friends when they first took over the location, and he's always been a genuine, great person. And he worked really hard. I was surprised because the first thing they do when he took over is he upgraded all of the landscaping before they even got with the construction. And I think that was great. It really made a big improvement. This agreement, thank you, Mr. Sellers. Thank you, everybody, for this. It will be remembered, I've been a Tempe for a long time. I'm going to be 80 years old this year. I've been wanting this for a long time, and a lot of people in North Tempe have. This gives us affordable housing. Thank you, Rosa. I know you're behind a lot of these things, too. Thank you, Mr. Dunzing, for things that he's, that have helped with. I know you all have been helping and pushing. Thank you for that. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Joel, Doreen, and Harleen. Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Thank you, Mr. Sellers, really and truly. We've been friends over the years since dealing with this, and I just want to thank you. Thank you for bringing in your son. And I'm going to be saying a lot more prayers to make sure that this thing really happens. It's in your hands. It's in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Appreciate it. All right, next speaker I have here is Supervisor Jack Sellers. Please come forward and state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, and I will try to be brief. When the city contacted me and said this was going to be an agenda item, would you like to attend the meeting? I said, absolutely, I definitely want to be there. This is such a critical need in our communities and a priority for both Mayor Woods and myself. And what a, what a great project this is to have a neighborhood that wants us to do this, and to be able to have a community partner like Michael Pollak, who worked with us. And I just have to say that it takes a team to get this done. We've been working on this for a while. And Rosa and her staff, our Human Services Department at Maricopa County, everybody was really involved all the way along the way. But what a relief it was when I found out that the person we were dealing with to make this project happen was Michael, because he is such a great leader in our community, and I knew that we'd get it done. So thank you for inviting me this evening. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Michael Pollak. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Michael Pollak, 1136 West Baseline Road, Mesa, Arizona. And I just want to say thank you for letting me speak tonight. I, you know, it's been a long time with this project, so this is a little bit bittersweet in a way. But the one thing I've always said, whenever I've addressed those people that are in different cities, I've always said, I'll always try to do what's right, and I'll always try to make sure that I'm going to be part of a solution, not part of a problem. And I think that this project, especially with the police station, I can't tell you how important I feel that truly is. We've seen this area in transition for many, many years. And I remember when the Tempe Town Lake was a, was a dream, and I didn't really know if it was going to happen or not. But I thought, boy, wouldn't that be incredible? And today, I look out there, and I look at the buildings, I see the State Farm building. I see all the other things that are happening. And I also understand that we have a serious problem in housing, both in workplace, workforce housing, and in affordable housing, when people from the city that work in the city can't find a place to live, and they have to drive. We saw this for many years in California, where they have to drive for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, hour and a half. It's just so difficult to see. And to find out that the city, through the mayor, through Rosa's work, through Mike's work, and through the council, and what also makes it happen? It was the, it was the work that you all did on the 2024 for the new general plan. That was very, very forward-thinking because you knew you had a problem, and it was a great idea. And that was one of the catalysts to be able to go forward with something like this. So I think that very important that you had the foresight to do it, and sometimes it takes bold actions in order to solve problems. And the fact that you're doing it right here in Tempe, I think is absolutely wonderful. I remember when we reached out many years ago, and Darlene Justice, thank you so much for those kind words. She was wonderful, and I remember it was Hugh Holman's mother as well, and let her rest in peace. They both came to see me, and they said, all right, Michael, are you really going to do this? And I think I'd already done revive the Tempe, Poly Tempe Cinemas back then, and they were going to close it, of course, and we had over, we had over 1,000 neighbors let us know that they really didn't want to see it closed. And I remember her saying, can you really get a grocer in here? And I said, I'm going to do my very best, which is when I met with the Basha Organization. And the grocer had just either gone dark or gone out before that, and it was a pleasure. And in closing, I would just like to say that I wish I was 25 years younger, because, of course, that would be turning back the hands of time. Only Cher can do that in songs. But I can tell you this, if I was 25 years younger, I'd be the one with a set of plans here tonight, and I'd be showing you a development that would be incredible, and I hope I'm still able to be a little bit involved somehow with this project. Thank you for giving me this time. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Oh, yes. Mr. Carraway. Yes, please.
It's an honor to follow Mr. John here.
State your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, Lane Carraway. I live at 1422 North Sunset Drive in Tempe. My neighborhood is directly across from this shopping center. This is something that I probably have gotten 40-plus texts, phone calls, or stopped by since I announced this. Thank you, Ms. Rosa, for letting me know. It's really something we need up here. I joke, the only place I can have a meeting for a cup of coffee is Bikini Beans Espresso. So I am hoping we can get some more retail and restaurants up there so that the citizens in North Tempe could have something to go to, but I just want to keep it short and say thank you, everyone up here and city staff, for making this happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, are there any other speakers on Item 8A1? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion. Council, are there any further comments or discussion on this item, or do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Darlene, I promise the screen's coming up soon. I promise. And that item passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you all for being here this evening. Appreciate the partnership. All right, that moves us to Item Number Seven, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the Consent Agenda is miscellaneous Items 7A1 through 7A17, awards of bids and contracts, Items 7B1 through 7B23, and resolutions, Items 7C1 through 7C20, with the exception of Item 7C18, which has been pulled and will be voted upon separately, as well as Item 7A10, which does have a couple of speakers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll 7A4.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. 7A4, 7A10, and 7C18. Councilmembers, anything else you'd like to have pulled from the Consent Agenda? All right, seeing none. I will look for a motion. Actually, let me just be very, actually, let me go, I can go ahead and prove it first. Let me move forward here with the approval of the Consent Agenda, which with the, with the exception of Items 7A4, 7A10, and 7C18 that have been pulled for separate consideration. It was moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Keating. And that item passes seven to zero. All right, first up then, we're going to go here to Item 7A4, which was pulled by Vice I can get these pages separated up here, which is to approve annual base salary increases effective July 1, 2024 for the city manager appointed June 26, 2023 at 5% and the city clerk appointed October 27, 2023 at 4% of their current base salaries. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to speak about the city manager's race and my support for it. Andrew Ching was appointed back in the day, our previous city manager, and I think a lot of people don't know that. And we appointed Rosa as our new city manager. She's done a great job, and she's
And she's done a great job, and she's taken a lot of heat unnecessarily so. And, but yet Andrew didn't take any heat when we appointed him. And so I just, you know, want to point that out. It's like, what's the difference between Andrew and Rosa? And I could tell you that you can probably figure that out. And I just want to just show my support for her and all the people out there that have problems, you know, she has done amazing work in the last year. We have gotten, we have moved mountains. We've got the projects going for Food City. I mean, it's just one thing after another, and I just really want to show my support. And I will be making a motion to approve the salary ranges this evening. I need a second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, we have Item 7A10. Which is a public hearing, item to hold a public hearing to recommend the approval of an after-hours establishment license for extended hours of operation between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. for J&amp;J Entertainment LLC, DBA Dimes Cabaret, located at 910 North McClintock Drive, Tempe, Arizona, 85288. All right. Are there any questions from council on this item? All right. If not, I'm going to go ahead and call the speakers that I have. I have a couple of cards here. Let me make sure I'm calling all of them. Actually, I have more than a couple. The first speaker I have is Chris Hayes. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hayes. I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona. I've lived in Tempe for over a decade. I actually used to live off of Curry and Scottsdale Road, so I'm quite familiar with the area of this particular business that you're approving a license for. That area has always been underdeveloped since I've lived here, and that's 10 years. I think any new investment in the area would be beneficial. Regarding to the after-hours license, there's no residences that I know of near there. I don't think it would really cause much disturbance, and I think it would allow the business to run more effectively. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Stephen Tully. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Tully. I'm actually attorney on behalf, here today on behalf of Todd Barowski. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. This is a request to you to extend the hours of a business. And the problem is, the objection that Mr. Barowski has to it is that the underlying business is illegal, and it's always been an illegal use there. And so initially, in 2005, there was a request to put a gentleman, an adult cabaret in this location. It was denied by the city, violated the city ordinances at that time. They appealed that. It went to the, it went to the appeal, and appeals, administrative appeals, and the administrative appeal judge agreed, finding that it would be inappropriate for the city to ignore state law. State law prohibited this use. And the cities, the city's own broader laws prohibited this use relative to the other uses that were in the area. And the city found five uses that were inconsistent under the, under the then statute and its ordinance with allowing this use. There was litigation. There was litigation involved, and it came to a settlement. The settlement is, I would say, extraordinary. It's, I think, fair to say it was illegal by the city of Tempe at the time. The city took the extraordinary effort to have the settlement not only approved by the federal court, but then sealed. And the, and the federal Judge Martone refused to do that. And he held in his ruling, he said, "The parties proposed consent decree would mislead the public into believing a federal court required the city to allow plaintiff to run its business in violation of state law, when in fact, the city is choosing to ignore state law. We will not place our imprimatur on the proposed consent decree or settlement agreement and effectively authorize the city to disregard its local ordinances. Tempe elects to ignore state and local zoning laws. It will do so at its own peril without sanction of this court." And so that was initially, then the business didn't go into, didn't actually start for a number of years, 13 years or so, and then it was various other things. But the settlement agreement that it reached, even if one were to suggest that the settlement agreement had value, it doesn't apply to anybody who bought the business later, right? Because I think the city of Tempe realized this was, this was not a, a deal was not according to Hoyle. And so what the agreement says, the settlement agreement says, "Nothing in this agreement shall excuse or exempt a future purchaser of Idaho's contemplated adult cabaret business from applying for a new permit in accordance with the requirements of the revised ordinance." So the settlement said it was, it was this Idaho business that sued. Okay, the city was going to say, you guys can have, have one. So the bottom line is, it was illegal when it was done. It's illegal now. There's plenty of uses out there.
Time's up. I'm sorry.
Well, I suggest you ask that you send us back to have a legal look at it.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker I have is Benjamin Bach. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Benjamin Bach. I live in Phoenix. Thank you for your time tonight. I am the general manager of the club. I have years of experience. I am here tonight to answer any other questions you guys might have, but also to let you know that we want to work hand in hand with the city of Tempe. We want to be excellent, responsible business, business owners. We want to set the bar for ethically and how you build a friendship and a relationship with the city of Tempe. We've also reached out with the ladies that spoke in the last one from North Tempe about sitting down with them to see how we can assist them in the neighborhood associations as far as also doing fundraising and giving back for them. We operate above board. There is never anybody under 21 in our house, in the building at any time, being an employee, an independent contractor, or a customer, even during the after-hours period. It will only be 21-plus at that time. We hire veterans whenever possible for our security staff, because they have the experience and the expertise to deal with that. We are a veteran-owned business as well. One of the owners is a 22-year career military marine veteran. But again, I open any questions you guys might have and how I can answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card I have, and I hope I get this correct, Daniel Pelenger. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, David Pelenger with Dimes Cabaret Vista California. We just want to thank city staff. They've worked with our management team over the past six months to process this permit for additional business opportunities in the evenings. We appreciate staff's recommendation for approval and the unanimous support of the planning commission prior to this as their recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other speakers on Item 7A10? Yes, Darlene Justice, please come forward, stationed in place of residence. You have three minutes.
It's a marathon night. Okay. We have, I have spoken with the police concerning this operation. I have been told that they've really looked into things and that, and they're, they're going to also condone it. I had two big requests that I asked for, and they've talked about them, but I would like them to be sort of put into the agreement. And they have said they won't do this. No one under 21 will be admitted. Once you go beyond 2 o'clock, and they're not serving alcohol, 18-year-olds could legally go in there. But we need to make sure that they aren't, that under 21s do not. This happened in Guadalupe, when there was a strip club, and they were very worried about it going in. And they were worried because they have an alcohol problem. The strip club said, "We won't serve alcohol." But however, the unintended consequence was 18-year-olds could go in, and that happened in Guadalupe. So no one under 21, whether it's the regular hours or after 2. The other thing is, if you look at Dream Palace, they stay up until 8:00 in the morning. And no, they don't have alcohol inside, but people go out to their cars and they drink. I have seen it firsthand. I've actually seen it at 3:30 in the morning, when I couldn't sleep because there was something else on an agenda that I was checking on. So I have seen it firsthand. So they go out to their cars and they go back in. I have been told by the Dimes folks that there will be no return after leaving. I would like for you to make sure that that's in there, because if they, if the police find that, then we should be able to say, hey, this, this is not right. I appreciate the mentioning about fundraising. I didn't say anything about thank you for helping us with fundraising. Frankly, I wouldn't, I would not work with a strip club for fundraising for our community. I applaud that they want to help Tempe. They can help with trash pickup, with a whole bunch of stuff. And I wish them well with their business, and I hope they do what they say and that the police are expecting. But please, no one under 21, and no return. After 2 o'clock, when, when people go home, or people come in, they should be banded or something. You can't go to your car and come back in. Because they, one of the things they said is, "This will help people sober up before they go home." So people there at the club, inviting and drinking alcohol, if they stay after 2, they can sober up, not if they go out to their cars and continue to drink. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Keating?
Mayor, my question is for the city attorney. I think Ms. Justice made some great points there as far as mitigating any unwanted effects of extending the hours. Are those, are her stipulations something that we can legally put in the approval?
Mayor, Mayor Woods, Councilmember Keating, yes, I think you can add those stipulations if you choose and vote for it. But I will, I will ask if Community Services, excuse me, Community Development Director has any concerns, though I would recommend asking him as well.
I see Jeff Tammy Levis shaking his head, saying, "No concerns."
Before we do that, does your client have any concerns?
On behalf of the applicant, we appreciate the community's support, and we have no problem, including in your motion, 21 and over at all times, and no in and out after, as part of this permit.
Thank you, Mayor. Then I move we approve with the stipulations of 21 and over at all times and no reentry after leaving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been moved by, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Any further comments or questions? And that vote passes seven to zero. All right, next up here. We have Item 7C18, which was also removed for separate consideration. And that one is to adopt a resolution approving a template fiber license and right-of-way use agreement to be issued to qualified internet services providers, qualified internet service providers by the city engineer. Yes, Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted a moment to, to address this, because, you know, this is a BFD in the city of Tempe. And back in 2016, I originally met with Google to try to bring fiber to the city of Tempe, and Google Fiber, that is. And at that time, there was only a few other cities in the country that even were being considered, and Tempe was one that they picked to come to. And we actually moved along that process to bring the, bring it to Tempe. But there was some legal issues, and unfortunately, we couldn't make it happen at that time. So years passed, and then Mesa, unfortunately, Mesa, was the first to get Google Fiber in the valley. But there was an opportunity to bring Google back to Tempe. So I remember last summer, Councilmember Hodge and I had the opportunity to meet with the team at Google to discuss this possibility, went out in the, I believe it was 117-degree day, to tour the site. And I didn't know this tour was going to be outside, when they said, "Do you want to go tour the Google site?" I'm like, "Yeah, it sounds great." Yeah, we were literally walking around the streets of Mesa while they're tearing up, while they're laying the fiber lines. And it was actually kind of a really cool process to see them do that. They do it very, very quickly, shockingly quickly. You would, you know, they're in front of any given house for like a half an hour, just going right along, lay the cable, and then repave right over it. So this is the first step of a long road to bringing fiber to the citizens of Tempe, but I couldn't be happier for the city. And this is a huge opportunity, a giant leap, as one said, for the city. So I just want to thank the city manager for her work on this, Councilmember Hodge for your work on this, and everyone's work on this. I know this entire council is very supportive of upgrading the city's broadband network. So I just wanted an opportunity to speak to that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, thank you. Also, thank you to our city manager, because Councilmember Keating, that was one of the first things we talked about when we got on the committee together, is that we wanted to, he had had it in his, you know, grasp in 2016, and when I came on, we, that's one of the first things we started talking about. And when our city manager came aboard, that was one of the first meetings we actually had together was about the fiber. So thank you so much. And also, I just want to tell you that we are working towards, this is going to be something not just for just the city, but it's also going to be great for our school districts too, because that's something that our next step is going to be to hit the school districts also. So I just want to thank everybody who's worked on it. And Sapan, thank you so much, because while we were out there 117 degrees, you were out there with me digging a trench, because we actually dig one when I was out there. We actually put one in the ground, and Sapan actually helped me with that. So thank you so much.
Sounds good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yeah, I think that's just another example of getting things done that our city is now doing. So it's really exciting to see all the process going forward, progress going forward. And I really appreciate both my colleagues for initiating it and our city manager for making it happen. I like to get things done, and we're doing it.
Thank you so much. I've got one speaker on this item as well. Is Will Novak here? There he is. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor, Council, Will Novak with Google Fiber. I'm a resident of Phoenix, but I'm a resident of Tempe every Saturday in the fall. I just wanted to thank all of you. I wanted to thank Jared in IT, if he is here. When we initially started working on this together, quite frankly, we were pretty far apart. And the city had some pretty different ideas that maybe weren't in line with what the private sector was hoping to do. And you all worked extremely hard, including coming out in 117 in the middle of last year's record heat wave. I would like it on the record that I did bring Otter Pop, so it wasn't a total loss.
I didn't have Hot Flakes.
Oh, I didn't have, yeah, all right. But anyway, we are so excited. There is still a little bit of work to do on some build methods to get the city and the private sector aligned on that. But we are so excited, and once this is all, you know, ducks are all in a row, we are excited to be the first new ISP and fiber entrant into the city of Tempe. And just once again, really wanted to thank Councilmembers Hodge and Keating for really going above and beyond on this.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Item 7C18? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none of this, no further comments from council, I'd look for a motion on Item 7C18. It's been moved by Councilmember Devaro?
Go ahead.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. All right, that brings me to the Nonconsent Agenda. Item Number 8. All items listed on the Nonconsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. First of all, Item 8A1 was already heard previously, as we've talked about, which means the first item now is Item 8A2, which is to approve a seven-year sole-source contract renewal with Acela Inc. for software and service, migration, and ongoing maintenance and support services for the city's enterprise-wide permitting software solution for the Community Development Department.
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Devaro. Please vote. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to award two-year contracts with three one-year renewal options to Competitive Surfacing Solutions, Flex Ground LLC, and Heskor Incorporated for the supply and installation of rubberized playground safety surfacing. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by, okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Devaro and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A4, which is The last item under the section is 8A4, which is to award a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options to Weber Water Resources LLC, Pump Man Incorporated, and KP Ventures Well Drilling and Pump Company LLC to conduct maintenance and repairs on water wells and pumps. Council members, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. The next section of the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no substantive votes will be taken. The second hearing and votes are scheduled for August 26, 2024. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for planned area development to modify development standards for building height and a development plan review for the addition of a 160-foot tall manufacturing and warehouse building on 42.5 acres for Project Elevate located at 1850 West Elliott Road. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
Yes.
All right, please come forward. And I believe Brian Wright with Kim Lee Horn, Bridget Condon from Swire Coca-Cola.
Yes, good evening. My name is Bridget Condon. I'm the Director of Public Relations and Government Affairs for Swire Coca-Cola. And Brian is going to have a really fun time telling you about building materials and drainage plans, but I wanted to take the chance for you and also for those in the audience. In case you didn't know, Swire Coca-Cola, we are your local bottler and distributor here in Arizona. And some of those wonderful products that you're drinking up there tonight were made right here in Tempe. And likewise, over my right shoulder, I want them to give a quick wave, I have Miguel Pedroza, who's one of our plant managers, and Mr. Ganzelmeyer, who's our Vice President of Logistics. Again, I am very lucky, I get to see you all at Chamber, nonprofit events, but these are just some of the faces that are actually making sure those products are getting to you and our customers at the time that they need. So, again, a quick little overview of the Coca-Cola system in Arizona. So, you see that bottle here in Tempe, anywhere in Arizona that you are drinking a Coca-Cola product or another beverage that we distribute, those are coming from right here in Tempe. And the job supported comes, this is all from data in 2022, and we know that for every one job that we have in the Coca-Cola system, we are supporting nine other jobs. And really, this is actually a very low estimate because again, really, who is impacted when we are doing well? That means our customers are doing well. So, the grocery store that you attend, your favorite movie or music venue, going to an ASU game, those are all the people who benefit when we are doing well. While we have a little over 2,000 employees in the state generally, the largest population of that is right here in Tempe with about 1,100 employees, about 900 in our plant, but we have many other services right here. And for all of these other numbers, we actually would expect that in 2023 and again in 2024, that those numbers are going to be higher. Again, this is a reflection of 2022. And in addition to those numbers of dollars invested in Arizona communities, we also are really glad to have rolled out some volunteerism programs where we pay our employees to get out and volunteer in their community. So, last year, we had 9,000 hours of volunteer time in Arizona and we expect those numbers to go up. And again, our Tempe production facility has been here for over 40 years. And Mayor Woods, I was glad to see you at the Chamber of Business Award. We were very glad to be nominated for Large Business of the Year. We did not get it this year, but I suspect with this project, we might be really good in the running for the next round. And one of the things we're most proud of is those bottom two numbers, so that recycling rate, so we either say recycling rate or diversion rates. Again, these are materials that we are using and keeping out of a landfill and either reusing them in our process or finding another use for them, whether in our own system or in the community. And then that 36.6 million case production is a little bit hard to really see and visualize, so we would love to come and give you a tour. We have been happy to have the planning department come and see. And really, that's part of the purpose of this project today. We have made a lot of investments in our plant so that we can again, meet the demands of our customers, of our communities. And there are times where we are producing so much product that our aisleways are full. You can imagine for some events that are regularly occurring, like the Waste Management Open, or those fun events that come through, like the Men's Final Four Championship, we have to produce an enormous amount of product to make sure that those who live here and are visiting can meet those needs. And there's something about working for a very recognizable brand, that we are very popular when people are asking for support. So, we have sort of channeled our support areas into people and planet. So, I'm going to just briefly give you the highlight of how we think about those and some quick examples of how we have lived through those here in Tempe. So, under people, one of the things we're most proud of is focusing on that workforce development and college and career readiness. We regularly volunteer with and donate monetarily and product to Boys and Girls Club, for example. And this summer will be our first summer that we are going to have two paid interns at our Tempe location. It will be, one will be with our facilities team and another will be with our account executive team, so supporting accounts like Arizona Suns, Cardinals. And again, we have so many roles, we have over 800 job categorized roles within our company. So, our hope would be to continue to grow those internships and show young people really how they can put skills to practice right here in their community. And then community resiliency, unfortunately, there are many times that we are responding to natural disasters. Just today, we put eight pallets on a truck to go and help a community that has been affected by fires and flooding. That is a regular occurrence. Likewise, we are regularly supporting food banks that support citizens who are most in need. And for our employee impact, while I could go very deep into this and would love to another time, again, we have started to incentivize our employees by paying them for their volunteer time. And likewise, if there are any organizations that maybe don't quite fit within our giving pillar, we have now made a commitment for any employee who volunteers, Swire Coca-Cola will make a financial donation to organizations so that we can support our employees who are supporting the community. And when you think about planet, again, this is a very easy space for us to get into just both based on our own product and otherwise, but we partner a lot with ASU is a great example of a customer partnership. We have had students both come into our facilities to help us identify ways that we could increase and improve our sustainability. Likewise, for them to put their sustainability training that they're receiving at ASU into practice with our own employees, so we're incredibly proud of that. An initiative that's going to be coming up, we will be working with Keep Tempe Beautiful. There's going to be under Keep America Beautiful, the greatest cleanup of America, so we will be supporting their grant application to Keep America Beautiful and likewise, giving our own monetary donation and volunteer time. And one other very fun Tempe project is right down the street from our location on Elliott Road, we have a gentleman, Greg Clark, who runs Arizona Wild at Heart, that does heart, large animal, large bird rescue. And I understand that we have some experience laying line, so I would invite you all to come and put some of our donated syrup barrels into the ground. They become habitat for burrowing owls. Likewise, we do barn owls. And so, we've been able to relocate through this program, owls and other birds from Tempe and other surrounding areas, putting them back into areas where they are safe. And we have seen the farms and ranches that we collaborate with be able to decrease their use of chemicals and other pesticides because they are able to just naturally use the owls. So, again, that's a great program. Miguel, like I mentioned in the audience, puts those syrup barrels out and they are really put to great use. So, those are just some of the examples. And one that I know many people in this room were a part of was in March when we joined ASU to do the City of Tempe Lake cleanup and we brought more than 60 volunteers for that project. So, again, that is just a recent example, but we are always looking for opportunities to partner with the communities that we're in and we're really proud of the work that we've done here in Tempe. And really, why we're here today again, is for this project and the needs that we have to continue to serve our customers well. In the 40 years that we have been here, we have had a great relationship with Tempe and we really want to thank the planning department. Jeff and Diana have been great to work with. And the project that you're going to see from Brian is really the result of collaboration and a lot of time spent working together. It is really our genuine hope to keep that investment here in Tempe because we have loved being here and I'll turn it over to Brian with that.
Thank you. Mayor Woods, Vice Mayor Adams, council members. My name is Brian Wright. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. So, what we need today is our requests. So, we're looking for the plan area development overlay on the site as well as the development plan review. So, on this slide here, we're showing the existing zoning. The site is currently zoned GID and it will continue to be zoned GID with the overlay. This slide, we're showing the general plan for 2050. So, the existing site is planned to be industrial, as is the surrounding areas, and there's some commercial as well to the south. So, this application here, we're looking to increase the permanent max building height from 90 feet to 160 feet to accommodate this expansion of this vertical storage system as well as the approval of the development plan. So, here's an existing site aerial showing the existing conditions of the site today. This slide here shows some context photos. This photo on the left is from Elliott Road looking to the north, and then this photo here is from Harrell looking to the northwest. So, on this slide, we're showing the proposed plan for the site. I'm turning from left to right. Area two and four, those areas are the existing buildings that are being remodeled. Area three is the new proposed vertical storage facility. Five is the new fleet facility. Six is water tower. Seven is a guardhouse. Then the two red squares labeled one are the existing offices that are going to be removed and to make room for storage. So, on here is our landscape plan. We work very closely with planning to make sure that we're correctly allocating the trees and plants to help with the heights of the buildings and also providing that native planting for the site. So, on this slide here, we're showing the green IGCC code that we're looking to try to comply with. So, currently, the three that we are able to comply with and are working on is bicycle parking, native plants, and continuous air barriers. And then the remaining ones are all that we are considering and working through with design to make sure that we can provide those items. So, in here are some of the renderings of the proposed facility. So, this is on the I-10 on the eastbound lanes looking southeast. This is also on the I-10, the westbound lanes looking to the northeast. This is a shot from Elliott Road looking to the north. And then this last one is along Harrell looking to the northwest. And then if you have any questions, we're open to answering them. But thank you for your time.
Sounds good. Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Anyone on council, any comments or questions? Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, I will be there to delay the pipe thing now. And also, I would love to have a meeting, I mean, a tour with you guys. So, you did offer that. I'm taking you up on that offer.
You just want a can of Coke, don't you?
You know it. It's all about the freebies.
All right, Councilmember Keating and then Vice Mayor Adams.
I would like to tour too, but I would like Diet Coke, please. There is a picture of a Diet Coke can in my office, so it is fitting. Thank you.
I have done the tour and it's awesome. So, I really encourage my colleagues to go do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My Coke's there.
All right. So, that being said, thank you so much. This actually is a public hearing, so we do have a public testimony opportunity for anyone in the audience wishing to do so. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. Once again, I want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of two 8-feet public utility easements located on the west side of Hardy Drive and south of Warner Road. This is also a public hearing, a public hearing item, so if there's any public testimony, I'm going to look to the audience. Anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion. Council members, any comments or questions? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located near South 52nd Street and West Green Tree Drive and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, council, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2050 West Rio Salado Parkway and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, is there anyone in the council wishing to speak about this item? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2060 West Rio Salado Parkway and authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion. Council, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning an existing waterline easement on property located near College Avenue and University Drive. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, just want to reiterate, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. The last item under the section is 8B7, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning an existing waterline easement on property located west of Palm Walk South of University Drive on the Arizona State University campus. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Council, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for August 26, 2024. Next section on the agenda tonight are non-consent agenda, our ordinances and items scheduled for second hearing and final adoption, so votes on these items will be taken tonight. The first item under the section is 8C1, just want to, once again, announce that the applicant submitted a letter back on June 25th to the city requesting to withdraw their application. So, since the application for the standard project has been withdrawn, the second and final public hearing will not be held and no votes will be taken on this item this evening, which moves me to item 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R3 and R4 to MU4 Mixed Use High Density, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new five-story mixed-use development consisting of 910 dwelling units and commercial uses on 17.22 acres for Tempe Gateway located at 2180 North Scottsdale Road. The applicant is Barry Riddell LLC. And I see Wendy Riddell coming. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Wendy Riddell with the Law Firm, Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Colerich, Councilmember Navarro. Quite confident this will not be the last time I'm appearing in front of you, but it is certainly the last time in Tempe and it's been an honor, so thank you. Here to talk this evening about Tempe Gateway, the northwest corner of Scottsdale Road in McAllips. It is a site that is owned by Colerich. It has in fact, been owned and maintained by them since 2012. Matt is in the back of the room with me here today, has been at each and every one of these meetings. They do have a track record of reinvesting into their properties and being long-term holders of their properties. They have 11 separate properties here in the valley and they very much intend to redevelop and maintain and hold this property well into the future. This was a site frankly, that was built back in the 1970s. The aerial you're seeing here is from 1979. And the fact is, it is a site that is indeed ripe for reinvestment. Our request today is to rezone it from R3, R4 to MU4 Development Plan Review, redeveloping the site with effectively double the density, adding market rate units. I will tell you, we began this project by meeting with the North Tempe neighbors. That has been the beginning, the genesis, and how we have proceeded throughout it. There has indeed been, and this council is well aware, quite a bit of misinformation circulated on social media about this project. I want to set the record straight, we do not need a general plan amendment. In fact, we are in conformance with your recently approved general plan. We are also not kicking people out of their homes. Construction on this project of Phase 1 will not begin until 2028. And then there are, there are three phases in total and there'll be three years between each phase. We have on this project first began notifying tenants back in November of 2023. We've got a minimum one-year notice to tenants prior to the actual start of construction and we do have a relocation plan that I'll talk a little bit more about here in a minute. As I mentioned, we are pleased this evening to be in conformance with your general plan. As I mentioned, we are pleased this evening to be in conformance with your general plan. I think a point we beat quite a bit at the last hearing as well. So I also mentioned, this is building out over three phases. It is a large site, 17.22 acres. We are looking for five stories, a maximum height of 75 feet, 910 residential units, and roughly 24,000 square feet of commercial space that will be all along Scottsdale Road. This gives you an idea of the height that we are seeking and how we have tapered that height to be responsive to the neighbors, to the single-family neighbors that are near us. You will note, in fact, you see the five, four, three, and two stories. We actually are proposing an addition as well to respond to one of the neighbors across from McAllips to lower the height there from five to four as well. Been carefully negotiated with each of the actual North Tempe residents here. And again, just showing how that height transitions to the residential view from Papico Drive north of the site as well. This is a view headed east on McAllips. You see, McAllips is quite wide here, 100 feet of right-of-way. You can see what that looks like as you look at that cross-section with McAllister Avenue off to your left. And then we also wanted to give a comparison, if you were across the street of McAllips looking across, what that would look like. What you see today is on the left, and what the proposal is, is on the right, all done to scale to give you an idea of what that's going to look like. As I mentioned, we've broken this out into three separate phases. Part of the idea here is to be responsible, to be able to accommodate the people that are on-site as we redevelop this property. As I mentioned, that anticipated timeline, we first notified tenants back in November of 2023. We're here, second step, obviously, for summer for zoning approval. We do not anticipate actually submitting our construction plans here until 2027, having those building permits in 2028, and then being able to actually start construction. So quite a bit of notice will go to any resident that's been there on-site. And then as I mentioned, we're building this out over three phases, but each of those phases has been designed to operate independently, to function independently, and to allow what will be future phases two and three to continue to operate and to continue to provide dwelling units for folks. This is what it looks like when you add in Phase 2. You can see how that continues to work. And then ultimately, when all three phases of the project are developed. And to give you an idea, we also were very careful about what, when you finish Phase 1, how would that garage look, recognizing it would be facing those older units. And you can see that we have incorporated metal screening on the back to actually accommodate the screening to provide for the garage, the idea being that those can then be reused on Phase 2, and then ultimately, the garage will be entirely enclosed by the time Phase 3 is done. So let me talk for a minute about the relocation plan. Again, tenants were given notice back in November of 2023, and any residents that have been in place and has been in good standing are covered by our relocation plan. We have a relocation point of contact person, and we will help do the following. Again, a minimum one-year written notice prior to construction, assistance with relocation to either a future phase or to one of our nearby properties, such as the one at Roosevelt and Miller Shizel, assistance with moving logistics, scheduling, moving company recommendations, negotiated discounts, and then onsite staff coordination the very day of the move. And we're also providing moving vouchers to every eligible resident in the amount of $500. So again, a developer here, he has worked very hard to be very responsible about how we're approaching this. To give you an idea of what the project will look like, this is the corner of Scottsdale Road and McAllips. You can see the retail commercial space type of uses that we anticipate. When you look at the project along McAllips Road. This is Phase 1. You can see those screening of the garage there, those metal screens, and what that looks like. Ultimately, when you see Phases 1 and 2. And then finally, when Phase 3 has been incorporated, and how it tapers down as it goes, as it heads towards that McAllister Avenue. You can see, it is also a heavily landscaped plan that we have created here with lots of courtyards and open spaces. And we have also updated the entry landscaping on McAllips with palm trees. This was done specifically at the request of the neighbors across on McAllips. It is a, as I've mentioned, this is market rate. This is a luxury project that we're proposing. It will have all of the amenities that you would expect to see on a project like this, from barbecues, bike parking, swimming pool, shade structures, clubroom, business center, fitness and sport courts, and of course, dog park that we know is near and dear to the Vice Mayor's heart. Tremendous amount of thought has gone into this, wanting to even make sure that each and every phase stands alone, each phase is by itself walkable, and make sure people can get to that commercial space that's up on Scottsdale Road. This is intended to show how it is walkable from each of the phases as you add in Phase 2, and ultimately, add in Phase 3. Again, trying to be very thoughtful about how each of these phases roll out. We've done the same thing with bicycles, bicycle being very important here, as we saw today in the city council meeting. We are also very much in support of adding bike lanes on McAllips Road. We had a little bit of a conversation in the back, and I think the city is looking into how it can make that happen in future phases. Also, we've heard quite a bit of discussion, or at least on Facebook, if that's to be believed, about the landscaping and the trees. So the site has primarily non-native trees, including bottle trees, ficus, aleppo pines, fruiting olives, and sisu trees. The reality is, if I were proposing to construct those in Tempe today, you would tell me I could not, because they are not permitted trees. We are also told by an arborist that they are not salvageable due to the age and the health. The pines are pretty heavily malted. Nonetheless, we are and have told the neighbors that we recognize these are important to some folks, that we're willing to make them available to any of the neighbors as we start to take them out, if they want to be able to take them, incorporate them into their own project. Perhaps they'll have better luck than our arborist thinks they might have. That is how we have worked hard to address the trees. We also, as I mentioned last time, have incorporated elements of the green building code and have compliance that we are including here, from connectivity elements, bicycle parking, and EV charging as well. And then finally, we have engaged in extensive outreach on this project. As I mentioned, we began with the North Tempe Neighborhood Association. We had meetings with the Cavalier Hills Neighborhood, door-to-door outreach, tenant notification, tenant meeting, neighborhood meeting. We do have 77 letters of support from North Tempe residents we have here to hand to staff. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we would otherwise hope to achieve your approval.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. So we can go with some questions from council. It's also a public hearing item, so I'll also take a public testimony as well. Is there anyone who wishes to ask a question right now from council? Okay, well, Councilor Keating, then Vice Mayor Adams.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I was going to wait till after public testimony.
Okay, sounds good. Perfect. Vice Mayor?
I'm good to wait.
Waiting after? Okay. Everyone else good? All right, sounds good. Then I will start the public testimony portion, and I'll probably bring you back up. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, once again, I'm going to take these cards in the order in which they were received. The first card I have this evening is from Julie Lind. Is Ms. Lind here, or is she virtual?
She is virtual.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Lind. Please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Julie Lind, and I'm a City of Tempe resident who resides on Taylor Street, just hundreds of feet from the proposed new development, Tempe Gateway. My family has lived in Tempe nearly 40 years, and in this home for 20 years. We have also purchased and completely renovated a smaller home, just 12 houses to the west of us on Taylor, and we plan to retire there. We are committed to this neighborhood and have actively participated in the cleaning, maintaining, advocating for, and the protecting of this amazing neighborhood. I have already expressed my support as relates to the benefit of value for our home and my love of this neighborhood. Tonight, though, I want to make a different point based on my husband's nearly 40 years' experience in property maintenance. My husband, Kevin, has spent nearly his whole career in maintaining apartments, resorts, and homes in Tempe and along Scottsdale Road specifically. He is very familiar with the type of property currently on this project site. He has explained to me that the buildings, infrastructure, and property there, it simply has a limited lifespan and is a much older property. Because he has repaired every aspect of these type and age of buildings, he believes that there is a limited time that is, it's best to remove and replace everything. The repairing, patching, and cobbling together of old buildings and matching them with the new is not the best way to have a quality and safe property. Some past comments offered on this project at previous meetings were about environmental and conservation concerns. Kevin believes that new builds and new technology are much safer, more environmentally friendly, and more sustainable than what is currently there. For these reasons and my prior comments, we are in great support of this project and ask that the council approve it tonight.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Ann Till. Madam Clerk, is she still virtual?
Yes, she is. And I'll move her up here one second. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Till. Please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Ann Till, a Tempe resident. I'm not for or against this project, but I think the council has a tough decision. There are two ways to look at this project. Neither are necessarily right or wrong. A few notes to start. The developer did make a great presentation, and all the checkboxes were checked, and the project would definitely be a no-brainer if this were a vacant lot. I think a legal document to commit to the relocation plan was requested but is not included in the agenda materials. So I think the project approval should include that, and also, I think there was a mention of Newtown donation. And so, you know, I just think there's, we should see the commitment to that. Maybe it's out there, but it wasn't in the planning materials for this meeting. Per the document, the developer is asking for variances. One is increase max building height from 30 and 40 feet to 75 feet. It appears they've negotiated with nearby residents, so I guess that seems okay. At the first hearing, the developer stated that they're providing more than the required parking, but materials clearly say they're providing 1625 spots instead of the required The Google and Yelp reviews aren't that great for the property, but maybe it's because it's old, but why people stay there, you know, is affordability and community, et cetera. Another thing I noticed that is Gray Star is listed as the manager on Gateway's website. The significance is that there is a Gray Star listed as part of the Chris May's price fixing lawsuit, but that's not settled, so it's still alleged. But on the other hand, affordable and market rate housing were topics at the Navarro hosted housing meetings, and market rate was subdivided into A, newly-built, typically more expensive, and B, older, typically more affordable. It was said that the market rate takes care of itself because of this A and B housing. So a mix of both is essential to Tempe. Removing this many units helps the balance, and once that older, less expensive housing is torn down, it can't really be replaced, I don't think. With the loss of the older units, there are X less affordable B units in the mix, so less inventory and more demand. And then, as far as the placing these residents, many are...
That's time, unfortunately, Ms. Till. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I'll just quickly say, this is about not only this project, but future projects. So what type of city does Tempe want to be is kind of the question. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right. The next speaker I have is Catherine Ward. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, all. I'm Catherine Ward. I am a Tempe resident, and I do live in the Papico Parkway neighborhood. I'm a homeowner there on Fillmore Street, and I just wanted to say that I am 100% in favor of this development. I think that this mixed-use, mixed-use high-density development, especially on that Scottsdale Road area, is so important, especially for that neighborhood. So I just wanted to give my support and say I am 100% in favor, and I think that council should approve this project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Darlene Justice. Please come forward. State your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, again, Darlene Justice. I live in this neighborhood, okay? I live in the neighborhood for a lot of these things tonight. But anyway, this is something we've looked forward to for a long time. My home was built in the 1960s, sort of mid-1960s. We moved in in '68. This development was built in the '70s, but it was not built for single-family homes. It was built for multifamily apartments. My home is built quite well, and it's a block home. It's not what they call sticks and stucco. It is a... But the home is, our neighborhood is older. We have people that are moving out. We have people that are timing, their lives are timing out. But what's happening also is the neighborhood is being refreshed. There are people, we have new young families moving in. When a home usually sells, obviously, you suddenly see a big rollout in front, and they go in and they're taking down walls, they're taking down kitchen cabinets, bathrooms, they're upgrading and that. Our neighborhood is being refreshed and that. There are homes to the south of us in Tempe, much to the south, that were not built that long ago, neighborhoods that were not built that long ago, apartment complexes. They are, they are in a fresh era. We are in a refresh era. And going in and taking, and having them redevelop this area, I think will be a great, great plus, and it will help us also. You know, I'm so pleased to be here tonight with Michael Pollak and everyone, and thank you, Chief of Police, because I omitted thanking him for his help also with that other project where Food City is. This is going to kickstart the whole area. It's going to help us so much. A lot of, Tempe is dealing with a lot of things in our community right now, and I thank you very much. I thank the police and that. You are going to hear people say, oh, they need to keep this affordable housing. It's not really true affordable housing where things can't go up. But it is time. We have affordable housing. We have in North Tempe. It's time for things to be throughout Tempe, and it's time for us to have this refresh. And I thank you very much, and I hope you vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, Kim Gaffney Loza, North Tempe. And I'm here also, again, giving my support for this project. One of the things that was mentioned earlier, Mr. Lind talking about the state of this complex, I kind of looked at it as you would an appliance or a car that you've done renovations, you know, you fixed, and over and over, and it gets to the point where you realize it just doesn't pencil out to keep doing it. And I think that that's what is happening in this area. Obviously, they've owned this property for a while, so they like the area, they're investing in the area. This is really going to help our Scottsdale Road. So I really am in favor of this project, and I really, they've listened to all of us. They've gone out of their way, everything we've asked them about, they've come back to us on. They've gone, like they said, door-to-door, talking to neighbors. So I really think that it's well-thought-out, well-planned. They are giving a lot of notice. A lot of these residents, you know, people that rent apartment buildings, a lot of times change over and leave after a while anyway. So they're giving them a lot of notice and making a lot of help and recommendations for them that help them see them through the process. So again, I hope you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Kathy Gill. Please come forward. State your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Kathy Gill. I live in Cavalier here. Hi, council members, my name is Kathy Gill, I live in Cavalier Hills, and I'm going to make this very short and brief. I'm in support of the project, and I want to say a special thank you to the Coleridge folks that have taken care of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Ken Jacobson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Okay, hi, my name is Ken Jacobson. I've been discussing Gateway for 21 years. I lived for several years before that, in 1980s, after graduating from ASU. I've got a petition here, 76, what, 65 signatures? It says, "The developer wants to throw us out of our homes and replace them with apartments we can't afford. Please, Tempe, don't let this happen." This is the part that's not being talked about here. These are people's homes. I'm 72 years old, a lot of people in these places are my age and retired, a lot of people in this apartment have disabilities and are living there because they're inexpensive. This isn't an empty lot, this isn't a strip mall, this isn't a failed shopping center. This has placed people's homes, and why are we being considered in this? Why are we being ignored? There's a fellow named Jim that was just here, he had a panic attack and left. He's 75, 76. He's moved in a few months ago. He put his wife in a care home, and he thought he'd really found a place he could live in indefinitely. He doesn't do email. There are a lot of people like that in this complex. They're not even aware of what was going on with this. There was a meeting, they said, in November, which was supposed to be notification for us, only five people attended that meeting. I didn't go to, a lot of people didn't go to it because it was presented as being an exciting opportunity to move into a new, refreshed building or refreshed development. I was interested in doing that. This apartment complex, too, is completely renovated between 2008 and 2012, every single square inch. This is concrete slab construction, they don't make them like this anymore. I don't think it's bad quality construction at all. I've lived at other places all the time I've lived there, I've never found another place I like as well as this place, I've lived at condos, I've lived at all kinds of places. It's really well-made, they don't make them like this anymore. I just can't... Anyways, seven-page petition here, and the biggest thing here, too, is, doesn't this contradict everything you're talking about in this, in this plan? I mean, it's been a difficult time for people who are living there. Most people there are struggling, a lot of people have moved away because they can't afford the rent increase over the last few years, it's gone up 40%, and this place that they want to build is 50% more of that, the prices are 50% higher than that. That's according to the Development Review numbers in the Development Review PDF. And I've got, before I, when I pass these out, I give everybody a copy of a link to the PDF so they can look at the information themselves. Some people didn't want to sign, I had three people didn't want to sign because they wanted to read the information first. We've got a PDF here, I've got explanation of everything, I have the page numbers for where they could find the price comparisons, but every single person signed this. Except for like, three, three people were planning on moving away soon, some of them because they couldn't afford it anymore. A couple people didn't actually live there and someone else was running it. Anyway, so I hope this isn't a lie. Think about the people, please. There's something in here upstairs.
I'm sorry, that's time, Mr. Jacobson, I'm sorry. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Shannon Dutton. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name's Shannon Dutton. I live in North Tempe, near the project. I've lived there for 38 years. I grew up in Tempe. I'm not for this project, not that it's not well-designed, but it's not appropriate for where it's at for the neighborhood. It's difficult for me to understand appropriate reasons for breaking up living communities of the people that have been established over years in this complex. Many people depend on their communities at this complex. Current rents are something they can currently afford. A replacement project will not be within their financial ability to stay living in their community. I cannot imagine being told that I cannot live near my friends, and in many cases, the people that are their only family and they rely on. The existing apartments and condos there have been well-maintained, they're not run down, in need of being demolished as a blight on our neighborhood. We talk about, I'm fortunate, my house in that neighborhood is built of brick, but a lot of them in that neighborhood, Marble Park, et cetera, those are what you call stick and stucco. Are we going to knock those down? This is a well-made and well-maintained place for these people to live, and I really would like them not to lose their community. And that is why I'd like you to oppose it. If it was another area, on a vacant area, it was not going to increase the traffic, and if it wasn't going to be so tall, I'd feel a little bit differently about it, but it's our neighborhood, I've lived there for a long time, and I'd like to maintain the community that I live in with that same feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card I have this evening is from Kristi Arnold. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence, you have three minutes.
Hi, Council, thank you. My name is Kristi Arnold, I've been Chair of Indian Bend Neighborhood Association for the last nine years, we are the neighborhood behind Food City. First I learned of the Food City by out tonight. Anyway, I wasn't expecting to speak, but I found a lot of questions, a lot of things. I tried to reach Wendy, she's in the office today at Riddell, I can't reach anyone at Coleridge, but just a few things to add, the, this might not be the move forward that we're all thinking of. Again, speaking to the trees, I also spoke with Richard Atkins, and it would take 20 years from this point to retain, to regain the canopy we currently have. Ideally, you know, what do we do with that? I respect that it's older, the trees wouldn't be allowed, so I respect Richard a lot on that. Ideally, plant the new ones next to the old ones, this is what we're doing in Indian Bend Park, I think that's feasible. Tearing down pools and amenities and communities to just build a shinier bauble of the, of the same thing. I want to speak to affordable housing, I'm like, I like definitions, and we throw that word around. As the government and HUD defines it, affordable housing isn't a price, it's a person, it's 30% of what your gross income is to pay for rent and utilities. So if you're making $50,000, you're paying, you want, you want to pay $1,250 in rent. If you're, if you're making minimum wage and are lucky to get 40 hours a week, I think you're making about, I think you're looking for a budget of 700. So, we have students, we're ASU, like, there's not, you know, there's people of, oops, sorry. So that is what affordable housing is. If you make $50,000, $1,250. I looked into another thing, the idea that we're moving, nobody has said the possibility of relocating these people to Tempe, they're talking about Scottsdale. I'm not sure why we're asking Tempeans, happy Tempeans to move to Scottsdale. Shazal, which is right up the road, they are 190 units, they're at 96% capacity, they got six applications this week, I don't know how you would fit 400 people over there. The math isn't, it doesn't work with that. Mayor Woods, I appreciate you, I sound like the Tribune of like, let's get that in stone about the writing. I just spoke with Wendy, she said they, confirms they have done that eviction relocation successfully, but I'm not sure how, they're, nobody, they're not going to Shazal. Also comparing the rents, I looked at what is current, the low end of a one-bedroom at Gateway is 1040. Oh, anyway, the rents are higher, and I wonder why we're getting, why Tempe would get higher rates on that.
I'm sorry, that's time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. I see Mr. Caraway coming forward. Please state your name and city of residence, you have three minutes.
Lane Caraway, 1422 North Sunset Drive, Cavalier Hills, I am a 30-year resident in that neighborhood, 20, coming up 26 years in Cavalier, and actually, almost five years on McAllister in the townhouse there. I think you guys have heard this over and over, these guys, this is the first time I've seen a developer go out of their way to actually include the citizens. I have friends that live north of McAllips, we've discussed this project, east of Scottsdale Road, Marble Park, everybody wants amenities, we want to get rid of our Food City, we want things, we are a blight zone. This will help jumpstart this, we all know that, and then with the information about Food City, this is even better tonight, but just to let you know, the consensus in Cavalier Hills, which is directly across, is overwhelmingly supportive of this project, so that's all I got to say, I'm not going to say anything about South Tempeans tonight.
Thank you. All right, that's the last card that I have, is everyone's... Mr. Palmer, please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Yes, Tim Palmer, 60-year resident in Tempe. I'm going to try to be as concise as possible. In theory, I'm not against this project. What I have concerns about is the human impact sensitivity problem, that it's not entirely clear how this is going to be handled, and, Mr. Mayor, you did encourage a discussion with the city attorney to come up with, you know, how the relocation plan is going to be executed. I haven't heard any discussion of, of that being cast in stone tonight, and I actually had a phone conversation with you that this should require a cast-in-stone document. I'm not going to say anything more about that. Secondly, this is an environmental impact crime, and it's, you know, I follow projects in Tempe, there's more and more projects being talked about of, let's tear everything down and put something new in. What is Tempe doing to develop policy to discourage total demolition of projects? So I challenge you to have that discussion. Thirdly, there hasn't really been any discussion here tonight about how this is going to impact the neighborhood, and I am going to say that I was very offended the last meeting that Mr. Caraway said this was really none of my business as a, as a South Tempe resident. I'm concerned about all parts of Tempe, I pay property taxes here, I own a home here, I have a say, so what, and the thing that really concerns me for these, for these residents that, you know, single-family homes is the parking issue. Nothing was talked about tonight about parking, and again, there's going to be a parking garage, but how many, there's going to be a percentage of people that will not park in that parking garage, therefore, they're going to park in the surrounding neighborhoods. I didn't hear anything said tonight about what is going to keep the quality of life for the people, a good quality of life for the people who own a single-family home in this neighborhood. The reason I discuss this is because I live very near Denel Plaza, and I have extreme concerns that the details are never really addressed, and so this project, I still feel, has a lot of unaddressed concerns, and I, and I'm not really hearing from anybody about how they address the details, so I challenge you to address the details, thank you.
Thank you. Is everyone in the audience pushing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing that, I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Ms. Riddell, if you could come join us again. Is there anyone in the council who has comments or questions?
No, I mean, I'll let her finish first, and I do have comments.
Were you already done with your presentation, or is there something you want to address?
Mr. Mayor, just one thing I wanted to point out, you did, in fact, at the last hearing, ask us to work with the city attorney and to create language to ensure that the relocation plan is included as a stipulation. It is, in fact, if you look at the ordinance, it was updated and shared online. Paragraph number four does require us to be in conformance with the relocation plan to demonstrate that at the time of site plan approval, so it is, in fact, locked in stone.
Is it possible, too, that either Ms. Riddell or Mr. Anderson, you could read the exact wording, just so residents can hear it, in case they didn't see it in the packet? I want to make sure that it's...
I have it highlighted right here, I'd be delighted to read it. It says, "At the time of site plan submittal and permitting for each phase, the community development director will confirm compliance by the application with the relocation plan as part of any permit approval request submitted by the applicant."
So, thank you, and that's the language that's been agreed upon?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct, we did work that out as part of the ordinance, so it will be...
So basically, in kind of even non-lawyer words, what it basically means, from my understanding, and I guess I'm looking at Jeff Tamilevich or, you know, even our city manager on this, if there is no compliance with the relocation plan, permits will not be issued, so construction cannot commence and demolition couldn't commence, correct?
Mayor, that's correct, the wording does have the community development director designated to confirm compliance, or the building permits or plans could be withheld.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that that is definitely stated for the record, that that has been memorialized since the last meeting we had on June 6th, so once again, just stating publicly, if the relocation plan is not adhered to, as voted upon, if this project does gain approval this evening, if it's not adhered to, building permits are not going to be issued for demolition or for construction. So I believe that is really holding the, you know, what we spoke about before, so I want to make sure that I point that out. Anyone else? Please, Catherine Ward?
Just to add on to that, that's first phase, but you also have three phases to this whole project, so in theory, the second phase and the third phase get how many years of notice technically?
So, Councilmember Navarro, it actually requires us to do it at each phase, and so we anticipate ultimately having about three years between each phase, so...
So residents will know?
Absolutely, and every resident here is on a one-year lease term, and again, everyone will have at this point a minimum of five years' notice, so yes, everyone will be well-informed.
Excellent. Councilmember McKeady, and then Vice Mayor Adams.
I just have to add a point. So if I'm understanding correctly, there will be individuals that will have up to nine years of notice, correct?
Or longer.
Or longer, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call myself, and just a few things I want to point out. First of all, I appreciate your efforts to work with the neighborhoods and give the people that live in that neighborhood the say on what they would like. I think that's very important, and I really appreciate you, you doing that, and just some examples of how you did that is, I mean, you lowered, you lowered certain levels because the neighborhoods wanted it lower, to two levels, so, I mean, you have truly worked very well with the neighborhoods and the neighborhood around there, and, and I appreciate you. I also want to thank you for the dog park and for the bike lanes and for those folks that are thinking about future projects. I think the dog parks are really important because it brings the community together, and, and people get to meet their neighbors. I appreciate the building code, Councilmember Chin and myself serve on the SEV committee, and, and so the green building code falls under our, our committee, so I'm really happy about that. And then I'm going to give a little, little soapbox about asset management. So, everything has a life expectancy, every, every project, every person has a life expectancy, and for example, roofs typically last 20 years, and then they have to be replaced. Air conditioners work seven to 10 years, hopefully longer in my case. Streets, seven to 10 years, life expectancy, and they have to be replaced. To continue to try to fix this is, is, is past its life expectancy, and it doesn't pencil out in the long run, and that's what people don't understand with asset management, that you have assets and sometimes it's time to start over, and that's what I'm hearing about this project, and I will be supporting it this evening. And thank you to all the neighbors out there, the North Tempe neighborhoods, neighbors that came out tonight to express your opinions and talk about your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else for the questions? Yes, Councilmember McKeady?
Well, are we doing our statements now?
I've, well, I've got some questions, but I mean, we can do whatever.
You go first.
Okay, sounds good. So just a few, and this is sort of a combination of questions that I have personally, but also questions that I've heard asked by residents many times on social media, or things that have been communicated directly to me through email or text. So, the first question that I've heard so often is, why is the project going to take 10 years to build in its entirety? That's one of the things I know that was raised during the Development Review Commission meeting, and one of the things that gave people pause, even though there are, even from people who actually support the project, they're concerned about aspects of financing, whereas one phase could be built, but then there's some kind of downturn in the economy or some challenge with the financial markets, and then maybe... or some challenge with the financial markets, and then maybe phases two and three don't get built. So why is it spaced out over a 10-year period?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My answer to that is twofold. The first is to be able to do it responsibly. I mean, this is a very large 17-acre site. To be able to accommodate, we recognize the people that are living there today, be able to provide the ability to relocate them both into future phases or to other projects, that has to happen over time. The other part is just to recognize, again, my client here is a little bit unique. They are long-term owners, and they are going to own the phase during redevelopment and the phase that is not being developed yet, and they're going to hold this for a long period of time. So they're doing that, again, in that responsible way to be that long-term owner of the site.
Sounds good, okay. The next question I had was regarding the parking. Can you talk about how much parking you're going to be requiring on the site? And is it in conformance with what the city of Tempe actually demands of this situation? Is it, does it meet, is it under, or is it frankly over and above?
So Mayor, it is, in fact, through a parking study, we've demonstrated that it is in compliance or will meet the requirements of the project. It doesn't necessarily meet Tempe, and we, by the way, rarely meet their exact code requirements. We demonstrate through a parking study what would be appropriate here. We are here at 1.78 space per unit. I will tell you, that is actually much higher than the vast majority of projects that we've brought in front of you, typically at 1.3 or 1.4. That's a total of 1,625 spaces. I will also tell you that is more parking than is on-site today when you compare it to the units that we have today. So it's a greater parking ratio than you have out there on-site today.
So you'd be increasing the parking with the new developments, so 1,625 spaces for 910 dwelling units?
That's correct.
Got it, okay. There was a question asked by Ms. Till regarding a Hometown for All contribution to support affordable housing. I think you would state it at the first meeting that you were going to do that. But is that true, that your client's going to be participating in that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, we will be participating in Hometown for All.
Okay. Do you have any ideas to what that calculation actually comes out to by chance?
You know, Mr. Mayor, it was unfortunately very difficult to calculate because it will be done over three separate phases. So I realize I was trying to get a number, and we never quite settled on one. It will be 20% equivalent to the building permit fees.
So basically, it will be equivalent to the formula that the city's actually put out in accordance with the plan?
Absolutely. And unfortunately, I can't share a precise number with you. I apologize.
Okay, but as long as it adheres to the formula, that's exactly what we put out. So no, no issues on that front. Couple more questions, and I promise I'm done. So there was a concern about the current residents of Scottsdale Gateway being notified about meetings. So you said you actually notified people back in November of 2023. When you say notification, was that just in the form of like sticking a letter on a door? Because where I live, sometimes they'll come and put a letter up saying, "We're going to be coming in to change your air conditioning filter." Or was it something where it's, there was actually some kind of a meeting or two that took place where people actually physically attended and were able to ask questions about what was going on?
So we have done multiple, notification in multiple forms. We've had someone that's gone out and walked door-to-door. We've done mailings, and we have done two separate open house meetings where we invited people to come and speak with us. We've continued to do outreach through some of the neighborhood leaders that you've seen here as well, and frankly, anyone and everyone that would meet with us and talk with us on this project.
And that was, and that's also for the Scottsdale Gateway residents, not just simply the residents in the adjacent neighborhoods?
Absolutely.
Okay.
For the tenants themselves.
Okay, so multiple meetings of that kind in person.
And Mr. Jacobson referenced the fact he received that notice and chose not to attend, but that notice was disseminated throughout the complex.
Right, I do remember him saying that during the first meeting back on June 6th. The other question that I had was about, there's been a talk about rents. Will you be offering a, will your client be offering a comparable rent for a person who's being, who's part of this relocation plan? So as an example, if you're currently paying $1,200 a month, you're not going to then be paying $2,500 a month in your new place. I'm assuming if you pick a place of a comparable size and square footage. As an example, I've lived in a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, 737 square feet. That's my own personal home. Why I don't remember that, I have no idea. But I-
That is what I was immediately questioning, Mr. Mayor. Not many people know that.
Trust me, I was questioning it myself when it came out of my mouth. So, but in that situation, so if someone does choose to stay as part of this development or perhaps wants to relocate to another one of Cole Rich's properties in the immediate vicinity, will they be offered a comparable rent that would allow them to continue to live comfortably?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, unequivocally yes. They will be offered a comparable rent on a price-per-square-foot basis. That is a commitment that Cole Rich has made as part of this project.
Okay, sounds good. I don't think I have, I think I had one more thing, but honestly, it has escaped my mind, so I will stop there. Anyone else on council with any further, Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of what you asked was kind of the direction I wanted to go in as well, but I just wanted to make a, just to comment on, you know, I said this during the first read, and I'm saying it again, and it's evident by the fact that we've kept Miss Justice and Gaff Milose here all night, that there's a lot of good things happening in North Tempe, north of the lake. It's North of the lake's time. It's morning in North of the Lake Tempe. So anytime that we have a neighborhood that's, that is in favor, that we have, you know, neighborhood leaders that are in favor, that we have members of the community that have come out from various parts of the city to support a project, it's always nice, because you know, as you know, Ms. Fidel, we often have some controversial projects in the city. So to me, to have that kind of outpouring of support from people that live in that area, who will directly benefit from that area, and then we'll, and a project such as this that will lift up the economic conditions of that area to bring some of the more amenities that folks north of the lake have long, you know, been missing. It becomes an easy yes vote for me to support this project moving forward. I think you, I thank you for the work you did with the neighborhoods, with city staff to get to this point where you have recommendations from staff, you have recommendations from the neighborhoods, you have recommendations from the DRC, all to support this project. And you bent over backwards, as far as I can tell, to make sure that anyone that is worried about being displaced won't be. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that happens. So thank you for this, and I'll be supporting this project tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Keating, I did want to say, it really is a credit. We are very grateful to Darlene and Kim and Lane and the amount of hours and time and emails and just hours sitting in council hearings is, you don't have very many neighbors that are willing to put in that kind of work, and we're very appreciative that they've worked with us.
Thank you.
Yes, I forgot to mention Mr. Caraway as well. Thank you for being here all night. I know it's late, but it is important that we have representatives from those neighborhoods come and speak to us, because those are the voice, and they put in the work. So I know that this council appreciates it.
I remembered, I remember my last question that I promised I'll turn. The last question I had was, it was something that I also saw on social media, but it's also something I think about in terms of having a father who just celebrated his 85th birthday, but is so fortunate that he lives independently and still drives. My question is, when it comes to the relocation process, and I think you had a slide up there that actually talked about kind of having almost like an ombudsman or a person who would actually help, it was a, I believe it was a $500 moving allowance. But you're actually going to have a physical person, like a single point of contact for people who are frankly looking to relocate or need to. And the reason why I ask that question is because my father is 85, and I am probably substantially better with technology than he is at this point in my life. And I know if I told him, "You need to go onto a computer or scan a QR code to understand what your options are," he's not going to be able to do that. Whenever he has to scan a QR code, I have to drive to his home in Iowa Tukie and actually take his phone and scan the QR code, something that I can do in two seconds, he struggles with. And, but I think that's the reality many times to people who are in that age range, who are frankly, and there are several people living in this complex who are probably over 70 years old. So it is something I'm personally sensitive to. So there will be an actual physical person that can help walk someone through what that transition would look like, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is an onsite person that will help coordinate the moving for anyone who needs it in person.
Okay, that's critically important to me. Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, first, thanks for the presentations. Thanks for everybody's comments on this and support on this. I know this is very dear to the North Tempe folks and just making sure their community is starting to shape up like they wished when I first started 16 years ago. To see the transformation, to see Pollock here, to see what they're going to do with Food City, those two structures are catalysts, and especially what's happening in Scottsdale and how that movement of development is coming down the road in Scottsdale. Opportunities for not only the projects, but opportunities for the homeowners, for the redevelopment, the refresh, all the advancements and things that are being seen north of them. I think this is a great development. I think it's hitting the point to staying within the plan, and that, at the end of the day, it's providing some life in North Tempe, which is much needed. And I want to say thank you for that. And I know that, you know, there are some people out here that are, you know, concerned about projects and, you know, what they're going to do. And we can't speak on anybody's behavior and how they're going to react, or where they're going to park, or what's going to happen. But in the most part, you're providing the amenities to do it the right way. You're providing the spaces to do it the right way. You're providing the height the right way and the living ability, and you're making it attractable. And the thing is, you know, the hope is with the neighborhoods, with development, and everybody living in it, with the community, you're making community. You're making and developing a community that people can live in. So new neighbors are going to be formed in that area, and new relationships are going to be formed in that area. And with change, there's always a great change. There's always a good change. And I hope people can embrace this. Tempe is changing. This city is developing. The city is taking older stuff, and they're making newer stuff. This council is going to have that challenge to make sure that we're doing appropriately in the right neighborhoods. And I think we're doing the best job as possible. Communication needs to be relayed. Communication needs to be heard. I know that every time, and it doesn't go without failure, that the last meeting, I didn't hear about this project. I didn't hear about the information. I never knew that this was going to happen. And at the end of the day, we always try to make sure that the communication gets delivered appropriately in every single channel there is. And I can't tell you, I know there's only, what, last time a gentleman spoke about five people showing up, people have lives. People enjoy what they're doing in the area that they're doing it in, and they choose to live in those areas. And, you know, people will adapt. I lived in that area when I was just out of college, and I knew that eventually I'm going to have to work harder or make more money, or whatever it's going to have to be if I want to stay in an area that I want to live in. So I think that, you know, as the challenge for the council and the challenge for us, you know, we embrace this stuff, but we also hope to help other people, and we have services too, to help people out with finances, to help people out and guide them. I mean, the city tries to think of everything, single detail that we can, so I want people to utilize those things. So I appreciate what you're doing in development. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Anyone else? Further comments or questions? All right. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Just a couple of quick comments that I want to make on this before we take the vote. This was, some of the things that have been talked about regarding this project, I mean, they've already come up this evening. It has, you know, this is actually General Plan 2050 approved. We had a General Plan vote by our residents back in March 12th of 2020, 2024, excuse me, and that actually passed at a very sizable margin. So I do think that when something is 2050 Plan approved, that clearly is stating that it's not simply just the council's intent for something to be of a certain kind of size or density in that area. That's frankly the intent of the residents of the city from north, south, east, and west. And once again, as Ms. Fidel talked about during the previous meeting, had the General Plan not passed, it would have required a General Plan amendment under the previous one, but the fact of the matter is, it did pass by a pretty sizable margin, about 60 to 40 from Tempe residents who did vote in that past election. Appreciate as well as Councilmember Keating, and I know other members talked about too, the neighborhoods being very actively involved in this conversation, you know, seeing residents from Cavalier Hills and North Tempe Neighborhood Association coming here to support this along with other North Tempe residents, very much is critically important to me. One of the things that I said before the previous meeting too was that the fact that the property has been owned by the same company for 12 years and has been properly maintained from my perspective, says a lot about the quality of the developer in this instance. We all know situations where people have talked about when a company might know that they don't want to keep a complex anymore, and they're planning on redeveloping it, that's when people stop replacing the floors, or stop replacing the dishwasher or the other appliances and the countertops, and everything begins to sort of go downhill fairly quickly. But the fact of the matter is, despite the fact that they've had these plans and the works, and they've known that they've wanted to redevelop this, they've still done everything in their power to ensure that the building is properly maintained, a building that was built back in 1979, to make sure that the people who are currently living in that building are living on well landscaped grounds and have updated amenities and are able to maintain their dignity in those apartments. That, to me, frankly, says a lot about the quality and the ethics of the developer we're talking about, which makes me feel a lot more comfortable moving forward with this project. I also just wanted to say too, there was another point that was made regarding, you know, who gets to have a say on these projects? The fact of the matter is, you know, we are all Tempe residents, and I do believe that anyone who lives in the city of Tempe and pays taxes in this community has the right to have an opinion about anything that's going on within the 40 square miles of our city. But at the end of the day, I do very much defer, though, in very tough situations, to the people who live directly adjacent to where a proposal is actually taking place. And as an example here, we had a project that was actually withdrawn earlier this evening, The Standard, where there were residents in that immediate vicinity, right around the southwest corner of rural Apache, who were concerned about the height and density of that project. And I think that was very much what the council expressed back at the June 6th meeting was, we are listening to the people, to all residents of the city of Tempe, but very specifically those residents who would be directly affected. We also know there's been some news stories about the Shalimar Golf Course, and I'm not going to get into that this evening in any lengthy way, but that's one of those situations as well, where we don't know exactly what's going to happen. Things are still very much in its infancy. We're all talking to residents in that area. And of course, any resident that's been here for more than five weeks is going to have an opinion about what should actually take place at that site. But the fact of the matter is, I know that I'm really spending a lot of time, though, while listening to all residents of Tempe, really making sure that I'm listening to the residents who live in the 300 or so homes right around the Shalimar Golf Course, because they are the people, despite all of us living in the city of Tempe, they are going to be the ones who are going to be directly affected by any potential development or proposal at that site. So it's, once again, it's not saying that people who, that if you don't, if you live five miles from a project, you don't deserve to have an opinion. We all deserve to have an opinion. But in these situations, especially in tough ones, I'm really going to try very much to defer to the people who live within that immediate vicinity and will be directly affected. The last thing I'll say about this before I stop is that, you know, there was an article that appeared in the paper just about three or four days ago, Catherine Rieger from the Arizona Republic, who writes a lot about real estate, and she's a very well-respected writer. And one of the things that she actually talked about in the article was that rents in Tempe over the last year dipped 3.6%. And the two things that were cited, we were one of seven communities where the rents are actually going down in a pretty precipitous way, which I think is frankly great. The two things that were actually cited in that article were, as causes for that, was there were temporary pandemic residents who were leaving the Phoenix area and returning to probably where they came from before they came out here. But the second thing was, and the exact quote is, "After a 30% run-up in rents during 2021-22, tenants' costs are falling as many more apartments are being built." So it's also about supply and demand. The fact of the matter is, the work that this council has done and the work that a lot of other councils are doing around the valley to add additional supply of the affordable workforce and market rate variety into the market is really helping to bring down rents, not just simply in Tempe, but frankly, across the valley. So the fact that we would be going from a little under 500 apartments here to 910 apartments, I think helps to house more Tempe residents, and I think will help to continue to put downward pressure on rents in this area. So I do think that that meets our overall goal and frankly, what was approved by voters in the General Plan 2050. That being said, I understand, you know, like I am, I'll say this before I close, I am a renter. I am a person who's lived in, I've said this very publicly, a lot of my career and a lot of the time I've spent as mayor has been talking about trying to remove the stigma from renting that many people sometimes have. And from my perspective, as someone who's lived in an apartment for four years, I understand the anxiety and the nervousness that someone might face if they get that notification one day, that the place that they call home may be potentially going away.[1702.74] one day, that the place that they call home may be potentially going away. So I do understand that concern, and I think everyone up here absolutely shares that. But I do think that this is a high-quality proposal by developer that's been proven to be ethical, and has frankly, done the right thing by proactively engaging with the people at Scottsdale Gateway, but also the people in the surrounding neighborhoods. So with that, I will also be supporting this project this evening. Any more comments or questions? Okay, motion, there's been a motion and a second. All right. With that, please vote. Okay, no worries. And that item passes seven to zero. All right, next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS TOD and R4 TOD to MU4 TOD, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new five-story mixed-use development consisting of 256 dwelling units, with 13 live-work units on 3.92 acres for Sterling Tempe, located at 1202 South Terrace Road, the applicant is Snell &amp; Womer LLC, LLP. And I see Mr. Wood. Good evening.
Mayor of Members of Council, Nick Wood, Snell &amp; Womer, One East Washington Street. And I represent Dinerstein. May I, if I may, take a moment. Councilman Navarro, to the extent of the privilege of working with you over the past 16 years, it's been an honor, sir. I guess two compliments I'd like to share. One, as you leave the council, the city of Tempe is in a much better place than what it was when you started. Secondly, you are leaving big shoes to fill. And I don't mean just literally. Those suckers are huge, size 15 or something maybe. But I think that Councilmember-elect Amber will do a good job of filling them, figuratively, of course, not, not literally. But it truly has been an honor. Thank you. With respect to the case, I made a presentation last time. You were all very, very complimentary of it. There's one thing I just wanted to touch on tonight. Councilmember Garland asked if we would be willing to participate in the green program, and my client in the back said, of course. So we will. And if we could go, oh, yes, it's up. All right. So these are the three, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 areas, in which they will be designing the project and building it in accordance with the Green Construction Code. One is implementation of stormwater management systems. That's of course, collecting, you know, stormwater and, and rainwater harvesting, and filtration, evaporation, reduction of light pollution, involving landscape lighting, interior, exterior lighting, et cetera. It will minimize the amount that actually escapes. Next is required EV chargers. We are going to have minimum requirements of 2% to 10%, and then we're going to have 25% capable of being converted. Irrigation system design, we'll of course have, it'll be specific to the vegetation type. So again, we manage that very carefully. Next is energy star, closing washers, dryers, typical in all the units. Allocation of roof space for future installation of onsite energy. We will make sure that we have enough space so it doesn't interfere with any of the other portions of the development to do that. Smart meter installation, this is all electric. We don't have any gas. So basically, it'll all be smart metered. Energy model will be conducted to ensure CO2 levels are less than baseline. Again, it's, we'll make sure we control the consumption. The MERV, which is the Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value, these will be installed to help clean and purify the air in each one of the unit's air handler systems. And then lastly, the low volatile organic compounds, the building materials and finishes are specified to have low emissions. So again, we will be incorporated all of these. So with that, I don't think I need to do a presentation. I respectfully request support and approval by the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wood. Appreciate it. Once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. I'm just saying, she was first. I heard her voice. She has advantage that she's right here too, though. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a portion of a waterline eastment located at a subdivision located north of Warner Road and west of Hardy Drive. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to give public testimony? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Chin. No, I'm kidding. Councilmember Hodge, I'm just kidding. Please vote. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a waterline eastment located on the west side of McClintock Drive and north of Weber Drive. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Chin this time for real. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance to amend Appendix A, schedule of fees and charges police of the Tempe City Code to revise existing fees related to the production of police department records, and add a new fee for camera video review and redaction. This is also a public hearing item. Do we have any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. Now, I'm going to move to our city managers' reports and announcements. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements. And one first, you have heard a couple of items on the agenda tonight that were what I always say Eric Iverson calls generational projects in our city, fiber. And I want to make sure that we acknowledge Jared Morris, our IT director and his staff, and someone that never gets mentioned is Sam Aerosmith from the Attorney's Office, who is a wicked smart attorney, helping us write licenses. And I just wanted to make sure they were acknowledged. The other thing is the North Tempe Food City Economic Development. Mike came up and spoke, April, Josh, Jeff, Ryan, a lot of people working on this. Also, Irma, Hollenbee Kane from Community Health and Human Services, and Tim Birch, who wrote a great grant, who got us the funding from the county. So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge, there's a lot of people doing a lot of work. It's the fiscal end. I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them. Couple folks I'd like to, I get to start. So tonight marks the last meeting for, I'll start with Tom Dunzing. So one of the things we talked about in his going away is, Tom always says to live a very simple life, to do good things for others, and that he learned those values from his family. And you can tell how much passion he has for the love of his family. They were here tonight, and how clueless Tom is, that he didn't even see them, that they were sitting on the other side of the council chamber. He's much better with the, the open books and our, and our financials, I promise. But one of my favorite Dutch authors, his name is Alexander de Ayers, and he says, "The key to a rich life is to enrich the life of others." And I can honestly say, working next to Tom, first iteration of Tom, before he left the city and then decided to come back home and finish his career here, I can honestly say this man is a rich man. He has enriched the lives not only of these residents, but of those around us. And we often don't get the time to share that. But thank you, Tom Dunzing, for your integrity, for being an authentic leader all the time, for simplifying very complicated budget books to all of us. And we're going to miss you deeply, my friend. Joel Navarro, I have known you for... There, there he is, Rover School. I wanted to start with this one. And he is in the left corner, third one up. And makes sense. His hair is still, different haircuts, just this is his entire career here also. This tells you the strong roots this man has had in our, in our community. The next picture, I have a few others. Look at that. There you go. There, Mayor. I did that one for you, Mayor. We love your trainer, Major.
Good night, everyone.
So one of the things I've known about Joel for over 20 years, and we've known each other since I was a director in the Diversity Office, staffing the Human Relations Commission. Joel was the, I always say, he was a commissioner, he was the chair, he did an outstanding job. And what he was great at was being an empathetic leader. That hasn't changed, and I think we heard a little about that last night. Three things that I highlight about Joel. Empathetic leader, he cares about others passionately. Public safe, not just public safety, and people just assume that because he is a firefighter. He did, he was instrumental in the cancer screening for firefighters, which has saved lives. But all of us, all of the workforce and in neighborhoods, we have seen it time and time again. And no matter how tired you are, we see the empathetic leader that you are. You're a risk taker. He was a champion of wastewater testing when people didn't understand what wastewater testing was. He understood what that meant, not just the science and the innovation, but he understands how that would help neutralize the public health disparities among communities. And that's what we talked about. And then lastly, how do we not acknowledge family? Stephanie, your mother, you talk about all the time, your family, Jillian Parker and Henley. And they are always top of your mind, sharing with us your strong roots and how they are the pillars of your strength. I admire you. We will miss you, Councilmember Navarro. Thank you for your service. And there's Jillian. We found this picture. And so, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, to thank my colleagues.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam City Manager. All right. So I want to do this a little differently this evening, because item number nine is current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. So I'll just state for the record, that council members may request that an agenda item also be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item, other than to clarify the request. Think what I might do this evening, because we've got two folks here who are leaving, who I know we want to talk about, is kind of go around a couple of times. And I'm going to start, actually. Let's see if we want to start with, with Mr. Dunzing first, and some of our comments about him. And with that, I will go ahead and start with you, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom Dunzing. I'd like to, on behalf of all of the residents of Tempe, and all of our stakeholders, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for 21 years of service to our city, to our community. You are a son of Tempe also, a son of a Tempe, you see. You thought I was going to say something else. You have been patient with me, patiently explaining so many complex concepts to me, and I really appreciate that. You are absolutely principled. You are truly an honorable man. And you are so very kind to everyone, everyone. And I will miss you, my friend. But I'll see you at Four Peaks or something.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. I should also ask too, if any of the councilmembers also have any announcements, feel free to, or agenda items, feel free to use this time for that as well. Councilmember Garland?
I think the, the thing that I love most about Tom is, I think we'll, we'll hear a lot of it tonight, is, is his kindness. I, I would say patience, integrity, character, all of those things, all of those special words that if you wanted to find a really important, really wonderful, wonderful person that you would like to spend your time with, if you have to go to work, or as a neighbor, you would want all those qualities, and Tom has all of them. And I, I have to say that there's, there's so many wonderful things about you, but one of the things that really helped me, and I've mentioned this the other day, is that he understood that I was a visual learner. And I, you know, being a new council member, it's, there's a lot of stuff to learn. And Tom always took the time to answer questions for me, even when I kept saying, I know this is really stupid, and I don't get it. But he learned that I was a visual, visual learner. And so he, every time I'd walk in his office, I'm sure he had a notepad just for me. But I would go in his office and ask him a question, and he would pull out a sheet of paper, and he would draw things out, or write things out, to help me to kind of visualize it, and really be able to understand it. And I, and I appreciated that. I appreciated really the time and the patience that you put into that, Tom. And again, I, I can't tell, say enough about how much I'm going to miss you, and miss seeing the first person that walks into the, into City Hall is always you. But I'm just going to miss seeing you. I miss having you around. I'm sure we'll run into you over there at the grocery stores or something. But thank you so much for all your time and everything you've done for us. And you're a wonderful friend, and I know this won't be the end of it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hodge?
Okay, I guess I do have one slide. I just want to thank everybody. Mayor Woods and I were at, he came with me, we did elderly abuse on June 15th, and we had over 200 people show up to talk about that. So, and it was Juneteenth too. So it was, it was an interesting time. But just to relay that our community supports, and it wasn't just elderly people in the, in the, in the audience, it was everybody who wanted to hear about it. So thanks to that. And Tom, I don't understand why we're here congratulating you or saying farewell, because you'll be back to work tomorrow, and you're not going anywhere, because I already told you that you can't leave. So you're going to stay. You already promised me you'll stay until after that project is done, and we'll just keep continuing that project for the next five to 10 years. One thing about it is, when I come through the office every time, I walk down every, I go around in a circle, and I wave to everybody to say hello while I'm here. I don't think it's been a time, but maybe one time, that Tom was not in the office when I went by and waved. He's always working. And I think I've said this from the day I came in, and I'm going to say it right now, Tom is the hardest working person in our city. I mean, literally, the hardest working person. I've never changed that, and I never will. I'm going to miss you truly. I, I just feel, I mean, I developed a strong feeling and relationship. I, you're one of my favorite people in the world. I'm going to miss seeing you when you walk past, that smile on your face, and just how you technically tell us no for money, and it's with the best way possible, when we come out. It's just, I know that we have Lisette, but you're irreplaceable in my heart. So just thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when, when Ken Jones left the city, I was like, oh, man, we're in trouble now. And I was very, very concerned about, about what was going to happen. It was, it was probably one of the first big changes that we had had in my time at the city. And I didn't know Tom very well at the time, but I got the pleasure of getting to know him over those years that he has served since Ken left. And we talk about filling big shoes, and Tom stepped into some of the biggest shoes imaginable, and not only filled them, but went above and beyond and knocked it out of the park. He is a true public servant, who has spent decades serving the city of Tempe. He's done a tremendous job on just about everything that we have brought to him. We brought him some very hard projects over the years. You might have remembered one that was pretty, pretty big. And Tom just could not have performed with more grace under pressure, not only from members of the public, but, but this council and staff as well. And, and Tom is the consummate professional. We're going to miss you. And it's one of those things too, that whenever, anytime anyone leaves, you get nervous about it, like, what's going to come next, what's going to come next. But I have full faith in Tom, that he has prepared Lisette to step into that role immediately, because that's the kind of guy that, that Tom is. So our city, we're going to miss you here, man. You've been great. You've always take the time to explain complicated financial issues to me, like I'm five years old, and that's what I need to be able to understand them. You've done an excellent job, and I wish you nothing but the best for you and your family in retirement. I probably won't be seeing you at Four Peaks, but hopefully we'll have an opportunity to, to break bread in the future. Good luck to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I think probably the first time I've met you, I think you were in auditing. And it was the office behind that other office, behind the other office. And you could still hear your head, like, this thing was in your head. Hey, you know, still can see you, smiling, chirping. I'm like, that's got to be a bad job. They stuffed them in the corner. But you prevailed. Obviously, you went on to bigger, better things in Glendale, then you came on back. And, and I think you came back in a very dicey moment, but I think we all had faith in you and what you were going to provide and do. And, and I know Ken Jones, you know, he, he led us to that point, but you picked up right where you left off. It was not a problem. You and Ken have worked together for many years too. So it was just a pleasure to work with you. And truly, you never So it was just a pleasure to work with you, and truly, you never see an accountant smile so much, you know, or say nice things. Usually they're sticking, my wife, I'm sorry, no, you smile and say funny things, too. But it's weird, because they're very orderly, very organized, and I'm sure shelves at home have the labels out, so I think you guys could talk later. Anyways, but, you know, enjoy the rest of it. I know I'll see you at Fry's looking at beers and maybe having a brat in your hand, and we go share one one day. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, first I'll do my announcement on fireworks. Just wanted to remind everyone that setting off fireworks is illegal in parks, streets, and sidewalks. Also, only residents can light fireworks on private property between 8:00 AM and 1:00 AM on the Fourth of July, so they're not allowed at any other time. And restricted fireworks include firecrackers, skyrockets, bottle rockets, missile rockets, and torpedoes. If you get caught lighting fireworks, it's a $1,000 fine. And if you witness illegal fireworks, please call our non-emergency line at 480-350-8311. And also, I really want to point out that fireworks are traumatizing oftentimes for our pets, our dogs and our cats and our horses, and also for our veterans. And I, my uncle was a veteran in World War II, and one day he was in Nebraska at our house, and it was Fourth of July, and I said, are you going to go watch the fireworks? And my uncle said, no, I can't do that, because of the memories that he had. So really, please be respectful of the fireworks. And, and I also want to wish Cindy a very happy birthday today. Thank you. Oh, wait, Tom. Okay. Sorry, you know, I get sidetracked sometimes. So, Tom, I knew Tom before he went to Glendale. Tom and I have known each other for 30 years, and, and I hated it when you went to Glendale, because that was like such a huge loss for us. But then you came home, you came back home, and, and I was so happy when you came back home to Tempe. And, you know, I knew you were extremely competent then, and you only became more competent while you were gone. You are smart, you're consistent, you are very approachable. Yes, and for accountants, that's not always what's said, but except for Stephanie and Tom, you guys are approachable. You're, you're good at explaining things to folks and making what can be a complicated budget process easier and easily understood. You know, I worked with you also when I was in, do you guys have something? Do you guys have?
No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Anyway, I worked with you before when I was a city employee, and you were always so helpful with budgets and the big numbers. And you are a friend, and we will have our lunches together, I promise. And thanks for everything you've done for our community, our city, and our employees, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I've got some comments about Tom myself. Some of the things I know we've all talked about is how Tom is always the first one in the office every morning. I know I talked about this at his going away party in the office, how there actually were mornings when I first came back as mayor, and I would go into the office, and I kept thinking to myself, I would get there at, you know, 7:45 or 7:30 in the morning, and Tom was always in the office. And then a couple of times, I thought to myself, well, maybe if I show up a little bit before 7:00 AM, I can beat this man to the office. And sure enough, there he was in the office with the light on, and I would, as I'm walking to my office just to look, I would hear, hey, Mayor, how are you? And I'm like, oh my, I cannot beat him in the office. So I gave up on that game very early in my tenure here. But I will tell you, he's an exceptionally hardworking man, as people talk about all the time, the ability to explain numbers in a way that we all understand. I am not by nature or by trade a numbers person. Many times I need additional context to really understand, but he's always able to completely give me that context in a way where I feel like I'm walking away as a full-on expert of the budget because of the work of Tom Dunsing, being able to explain very complicated concepts like secondary property tax and primary property tax rates and general fund revenue and bonding. He's able to explain all of those things in a way that all of us up here completely understand, and even more importantly, I think it was Ms. Gafde Loza who said that our residents understand, because that really is the most critical thing. We work for them, and the fact of the matter is, Tom's ability to explain those numbers in ways that everyone understands makes all of our jobs so much easier. But it's not just simply about that, he's just such an exceptional human being, just a genuinely good, nice person. One of the things I've had an opportunity to do in this role is I've gotten to know the mayor of Glendale, Jerry Wires, very well through a lot of the different events that we've spent time in. And one of the things he told me, because Tom was in Tempe when I first came to the city and then went off to Glendale for a bit of time, and then came back to the city of Tempe, and one of the things that Mayor Wires has said many times to me is, Tom was, is one of the most exceptional people that he's ever met in his entire life. And he told me at some point, if Tom ever tries to retire or leave the city, pay that man anything he wants to keep him around. Alas, we have tried that, but, but he is determined that it is time to retire. But I mean, but it says something that it's not only people sitting up here, but it's also his former colleagues and the current mayor of the city of Glendale who say the exact same thing about his work ethic and his intelligence and his character as a person. I will say really quickly, too, about Tom, the thing I admire most about Tom Dunsing, though, other than just his financial acumen and just him genuinely being a good person, is you feel like you're his best friend all the time, whenever you see him. I feel incredibly close to Tom, and so Councilmember Chin says she is, but I'm convinced that I am. One of the things that Tom will say to me on a very regular basis, when I see him in the morning and when he's leaving in the evening, is I will, will exchange, we'll talk to one another, we might talk about, you know, exchange documents or talk about some sort of city issue, but before we leave each other, he'll always give me a big hug, and he'll whisper in my ear and say, I love you, brother, and I love you, too. You are an incredible human being, and we are really all going to miss working with you each and every day. It's been an absolute honor and a pleasure. But the exciting thing is that Tom Dunsing is a longtime resident of the city of Tempe, and we know he's still going to be here, and he's still going to be active in this community as he's always been. So Tom, much congratulations and a well-deserved retirement. It's a huge loss for us here at the city of Tempe, but honestly, you have earned it, my friend. We love you, and thank you so much for everything.
Mayor, he is not going anywhere. I don't know why everybody keeps saying that.
Look, Councilmember Hodge, you have to, you have to accept this at some point. It's hard for me, too. All right. Next up, I want to look to Mr. Wolf over here. I think we have a special video presentation for the gentleman here to my left, Councilmember Navarro.
I'm Councilmember Doreen Garland.
That's right, girl. And I'm Councilmember Joel Navarro, and together, we chair the Human Services and Community Safety Committee.
And what we're doing right now is packing food boxes for foodies. Joel Navarro.
Shake and bake.
Is that what we do? Let me turn my camera around so I don't hurt you. So shake?
Shake.
Shake?
And bake. I lost myself. I said shake, you said bake.
Okay, shake, you go shake. More than 26,000 people needed food boxes this year, and that's nearly twice as many as last year.
Shake and bake, girl. Let's go. I like to bring a little something extra when I pack a box here, Doreen. I like to make myself a big tower inferno for a first alarm highrider flower if these kids involved. There we're talking, right there. Well, we're going to hit the racetrack anyway. Doreen, what else?
Let's go.
Let's go.
Let's go.
On behalf of the 350 members of the Tempe Officer Association, we say thank you for being an incredible asset to the community, for your leadership, your advocacy, but most importantly, your loyalty. We wish you great success, and we will absolutely miss you.
Tempe Community Council, Tempe Coalition has really appreciated your support and your championship of our efforts. So thank you, and I wish you well.
Want to thank you so much for all your support for Parks and Recreation, and more specifically, all the support in the last year, year and a half for the development of the Park Ranger Program.
I remember when we first met, you know, Tempe Leadership Class 19, the best class ever, and you sharing your aspirations to be on council. And here we are so many years later, celebrating your successes. I know you'll go on to do great things, so best wishes to you and your next journey.
You called and said, I'm thinking about running for council. Should I? Would I be good? 16 years later, my friend, and I can say that you have done an outstanding job serving this community. As a resident, thank you for your service. I will miss you deeply. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the thousands of hours that you have spent serving the city of Tempe. You will be greatly missed around here, and don't you worry, Vice Mayor Adams and I will protect the trees on your behalf. We'll keep you in mind every time we see a ficus.
We've worked together for over 20 years, from the Human Relations Commission through your time on city council. I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Thank you for everything you've done from the beginning to the end. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you for your dedication to innovation at the city of Tempe, and you literally paved the way for AI as well as self-driving car technology in the city of Tempe.
For the folks over in community development, we thank you for your service and support for progress in development in Tempe.
I want to say that I've loved and admired your work over all these years. Thank you for everything.
Your work in Tempe has made this city a safer, happier place. I've enjoyed working with you over the years. Good luck. I'll miss you. Go Aggies.
Councilmember Navarro, we'll miss you.
You have changed so many lives for the better, not only as a council member, but as a husband, father, coach, and neighbor. And while this chapter is coming to a close, I know you will continue to work to make our region even better, and that story has just begun. I love you.
And I think your devotion towards the city has reflected your devotion as a father to all your children, and I'm so honored to be your son, and I'm proud to call you my father. I love you, Dad.
Your passion and commitment to the things you set your mind to are truly inspiring, to the least. Thank you for taking such good care of Tempe, the place I grew up in, making it a better place for future families and residents.
I am proud of you, Daddy. You have done a great job within 16 years of city council and the things you have accomplished in those years, especially what you've done for the city, and that will help future generations. I love you and can't wait for your hard work to pay off.
Councilmember Navarro, thank you for your 16 years of service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
All right, I'm going to now start with comments about Councilmember Navarro this evening. Again, Councilmember Chin, I'm going to turn to you first again.
We.
It wouldn't be a tribute to Joel Navarro without a ficus tree, right? Joel, we met 20 years ago when we both served as commissioners on the Human Relations Commission. It was before we, either one of us served on council. And over those 20 years, I have really treasured our friendship. I think it's grown. I see you as, you're a Tempe native. I know you envied my ability to go to Corona, and you went to Marcos, but I think we've gotten past that a little bit. Over the years, I have learned a couple of things about you. First and foremost, you adore your family. You are a very proud father. I have heard stories about each of the kids and their accomplishments along the way. Truly, a great family man. And you also love Tempe. I wanted to find the right words to pay tribute to you and your long tenure of service to Tempe. So I thought pictures tell a better story than mere words, right? But by the way, before we jump to the first picture, anytime we're up here and we're gathered for a council picture, Joel invariably stands behind me. And since your mom is here and your wife is here, I'm going to take the opportunity to tell them something. He always stands behind me, and if you look at the pictures, I'm kind of standing crooked or leaning forward, it's because he's got an elbow in my back every time. So not only have we been friends over the years, he's been like that younger brother that's, that's picking on me every time. So could you talk to him later? Yes. All right, let's go with the first picture. It's some years of Joel's service to Tempe. I think this was his first council meeting at the, at the old city hall, right? Right? And, and they had gotten beyond the powdered wig stuff, but I think he's there. All right, next picture. I think this was, it might have been your homecoming parade when you were homecoming king at Marcos. It could have been. And finally, if you look in the audience when Teddy Roosevelt spoke at Old Main, young, young, come on, he was much younger then, he was in the audience, but also if you look to his right, there's Tom Dunsing. Thank you, Joel. Thank you. Thank you for being a wonderful colleague and friend, and thank you for serving Tempe.
I am never calling on you first again with someone. I want you to know, that was a total mic drop moment, and good night, everyone. Actually, next up, Councilmember Garland.
I don't know, you need to have her last. That is so unfair.
Look, I'm just, I'm just going by what it says.
So I just have to say that I, I have, I've really appreciated working with you, Joel. It has been a lot of fun. I, I learned from you how to work hard and to have fun doing your job, and your dedication has been incredible. Those videos that you were seeing, the outtakes, trust me, there is probably at least two hours more of those between the two of us. The racing one, the Ricky Bobby thing was hilarious, because we got there and we started to read our script, and he was doing it in a normal voice, and we were, we were not connecting. And then all of a sudden, we tried it again, and he did it with that accent. I laughed so hard, it's like, we had to stop just because I was laughing, like, where the heck did that thing come from? But that was Joel. Another one of those videos was, I'm taking off a fireman hat, and it's because just before that, he had this fireman hat, and he slammed it on top of my head, and I was just, I didn't know what to do. It was, it was funny, but what I liked about it is Joel always tries to find a way to really kind of enjoy what he was doing when we do something like that, and I appreciated that. I love your seriousness when we were on our council committee together, and his passion for the things that he saw that were important for our community that he wanted to make a difference in. And I'd say the passions that I saw was on opioids, what you wanted to do for that, the rideaways in the city of Tempe, supporting and supplying and giving the things that our public safety people needed in our community. I don't think any of those things are going to change, as we said, saving the ficus trees on mill. And I really think, what I saw from you is your passion and wanting to support those things, and that has never died, and I loved that about you. I will say the other thing that I saw your passion in is, as was already mentioned, is your family and your kids, your mom and your wife. I loved hearing your stories and listening to you and seeing the way you act when you are around them. I want to thank you for your public service. I can't even cry.
The over and under's on me crying.
Thank you for your public service. Thank you for being a friend.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Hodge?
Why did she do that? I mean, she started with tears, and dang. You know, Joel, I've known you since you were in high school, because I watched you play football when I was in grade school, middle school, against my cousin. So I've known you when you were that cocky football player at Marcos Denisa, and he was very cocky. To Stephanie, thank you for sharing him with me. To Stephanie, thank you for sharing him with me, because he was my work husband for the, you know, I've always said that, I said, "Our husband would do things," and he's always been that person for me. And Mama, you know, you raised a good child, and you know, it comes because you were a great person in the education realm, so I could never not forget that. So thank you for giving us Joel for many years. And I think you needed to be. But Joel, you know, thank you not just on council, you became my friend when I was on governing board, you've been, became my ally, you know. When I started to run for council, you were the first one to give me a mask check. I didn't forget that, Joel. Thank you for everything you've been, all the long phone calls that I can call you in the middle of the night to talk over things with you. Thank you for always being there for me. I mean, you've been a mentor throughout this time for me, and I very much indeed love you. And when I say that I don't want you to go, I'm not just saying that, I really mean that from the bottom of my heart, because you, just your smile, just your humor, you make it. You make our council so well. And I don't know what I'd do without you. I'm going to miss you. I mean, you're my two, I'm losing one of my guys, I'm my two guys. I mean, I just love you guys, because I'm a, if anybody knows, I'm a male person. I have, I mean, I have all sons. But it's just, I don't know what I'm, when I look over there, and Nikki, this is no bink at you, but when I look over there and I don't see you there, if my heart's going to be broken. I love you so much.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Keating.
Well, Councilmember Hodge, she won't be there, I'll be in his seat. With his assistant in office, so.
Hi, Joel. How you doing?
Joel, what's to be said? You know, it's funny, because a piece of Tempe history, I don't know if Joel even remembers this, during my first race, I enjoyed the endorsements of all the city council except for Councilmember Navarro. And so, when I took office, I certainly didn't expect me and Joel to work together so closely and become so close as we have over the past eight years. I would have taken the under on that, as the kids say these days. You know, in fact, I think it needs to be pointed out that Joel played a crucial role in some big accomplishments that I celebrated during the last campaign that I went around talking about, when we talk about things like Tempe Works and Tempe Pre and Tempe Maker District and Arts in the Park. Joel was on the working group for every single one of those big projects, and Joel was the guy that I would go to immediately whenever I thought of a new idea, I knew I wanted to work with Joel. That's because Joel's a compassionate, empathetic leader, and he takes a uridic approach to very complex issues. During my first race, someone told me, you know, Councilmember Navarro seems to have an infinite learning curve. And I was like, oh, what could that possibly mean? And it turns out, they were absolutely right. Our good friend Donnie, you know, always likes to say, you know, people underestimate Joel, and that's absolutely correct. I found you to be very deliberate, to be wise, to be fair, to be centered, level, at times when maybe I wasn't. And I'm certainly going to miss you. You know, all the things that we worked on together, another one, I was on your working group, you started the opioid awareness prevention, abuse and awareness prevention. So Tempe Pre, the opioid awareness and abuse prevention, and Tempe Works are all nationally-recognized programs that you played a role in, if not led. And I think those are huge accomplishments for our city and our state moving forward, and I hope that you feel very proud of all those, as I do, particularly the ones that we worked on together. I'm going to miss you, man. You know, for better part of eight years, we've been very close. We often will go out after meetings and share a beer and talk about the meeting and talk about upcoming issues, but also talk about football and talk about, you know, the various dramas that go on in a 40-something-year-old, single man's life. And it's been great having you around. You know, you've been my partner in crime, and you're the only member of our city kickball team to not pull a muscle every season. So, you know, we're going to miss our power kicker, and you know, anything I can ever do for you moving forward, please don't hesitate to ask. I know that you're going to run, again, back to the, you know, Councilmember Navarro was underestimated, you're going to run a hell of a campaign, you already am, for county supervisor, and I have no doubt that you're going to be victorious in that effort as well, because you're just the kind of guy that people want to like, they want to support, and they want to see rise up and get into positions where they're able to help people. And you've had a storied career doing just that. So hopefully, we get to share one more beer tonight, and again, man, I really appreciate everything you've done for me along in my eight years, and anytime I can return that favor, you know how to reach me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, Joel, you're compassionate and mentor, you're a loving husband and father, and I think a really good son, from what Stephanie's told me. So I really appreciate, you know, you're so well-rounded, you fill all the bills. You, you know, and what hasn't been said here tonight is that you save lives. You have saved hundreds of lives in your career, and that is the most important thing that anyone can do. And that is, you know, that's really, can't be underestimated. Excuse me. I call you my friend, along with his beautiful wife and mother. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. 16 years. I, looking at that photo brought back so many memories of standing next to you during that time, and I want to just tell you a couple of sort of funny things to start. First of all, I could watch that clip of him doing that accent as the NASCAR driver over and over again, and I could, I laugh out loud each and every time, oh, and there's the picture again, my goodness, I should have never. Jason, we're going to talk afterwards.
Lori was down at the gym then.
I mean, oh my gosh!
I do think you have Marcos.
It's called progress.
Oh my, I don't know how to recover from this. Oh my goodness. So one of the first things that I, I remember, you know, meeting Joel during the course of our, we first were running for council back in the 2007, 2008 campaign, and really loved getting to know him, just really found out how much of a, an honest, hard-working, genuine human being he is. And one of the first ways I actually found that out was from talking to his mother, Stephanie. Because one of the things that was really interesting about that campaign was, while we were out knocking on doors and going to fundraisers and doing all the different neighborhood events, many times, she and I would have conversations, sometimes in the evening. I remember a couple of times she called me, and we would go outside, I would go outside and talk to her on the phone for about 40 to 45 minutes. And then when I would talk to Joel later on, I'd say, "Oh yeah, I was on the phone with your mom last night." He's like, "You were?" I was like, "Yeah." Forty-five minutes, we were talking about signature collection and fundraising and how to get around to all the different events. But she was the first person that really told me very point-blank about just how incredible of a person you were and how incredible of a man and a son you are. And I really enjoyed getting to know her on a very personal level, right at the same time that I was getting to know you on such a close, personal level. And obviously, I've loved working with your wife, Stephanie, for years. She's an incredible woman, and I'm so glad the two of you found one another. You are an absolute perfect match, and just seeing the two of you together, and as Councilwoman Garland talked about, how emotional you get when you're talking to her and how you talk about your family just tells me about how deep of a bond the two of you share. So it's wonderful to see you both here, supporting this great man this evening. Although, I will go back to the first, one of the first comments that I heard Joel make up here, he probably remembers this, the moment he actually sat up here for the first time. I think the first couple of sentences out of his mouth are things that I will never forget, where he said, "Wow, it's really, these chairs are really comfortable, and everyone smells good up here."
I remember that.
Do you remember that? He, I'm telling you, if you go back and watch the tape, he said, "I will never," I was 29 years old at the time, but I promise, as long as I shall walk this earth, I will remember that statement. And then, and what is a very interesting reference now, at one point, I remember, I believe it was during a candidate debate, but I'm not totally sure, he quoted the now very sort of infamous Justin Timberlake, when he said that "We're going to bring sexy back to Tempe." And I can tell you, my man, you have most certainly done that. But the thing I say about Joel, and I said this at his event yesterday over at the Tempe History Museum, is the biggest thing that really always sticks with me about him is that he really is the same person now than he was when he first ran. Sometimes, you know, you hear stories about people in elected office and how they change over time, because the fame gets to them, or the attention that you get gets to you, or seeing your face in, you know, in the library and all the city buildings changes your personality and your approach to the job. But I will tell you, he is absolutely, from the moment I met him back in 2007, we were running that time, he is the same exact person today in the year 2024, and that speaks to exactly who he is at his core. He really, as much as people say it all the time, Joel really does embody the term humble public servant of this community. He is that and so much more. And when I think about the work that he's done, that everyone's talked about, his emphasis on public safety, his work on combating opioids in our community, as our city manager talked about, you know, we talked a lot about the COVID wastewater data during the pandemic, but that first, the wastewater data first started when they were working on testing opioids in terms of trying to proactively combat the opioid crisis in our community. And that was through a lot of work that you and our now-city manager were doing together. I wasn't here, but you were doing that kind of work. And as you said, that's very forward-thinking work that people don't always understand, and sometimes you get criticized for it. People go, "Why are you testing my wastewater?" But the fact of the matter is, we all know, as Vice Mayor Adams talked about, through your work in public safety and being a firefighter and a captain paramedic and championing that kind of initiative, you have absolutely saved lives. And I think that is so critical to point out, talking about that, your passion for talking about how to address right-of-bays and arterial walls, sometimes things that we just sort of forget about or drive past, and we don't realize that maybe something has deteriorated over time. Those were the things that Joel first saw. He said, "Hey, if we're not maintaining these center medians and these arterial walls, we're really not maintaining our community, and we're not instilling pride in the people who actually visit here or the people who live here." He's always had to focus on that. And we talk about the trees. I mean, and I know it's sort of become this joke we make about the ficus trees and save the ficus and everything else, but I think it once again speaks to, as much as he's been a forward-thinking, progressive leader, at the same time, he's always really kept with him Tempe's heart and soul and trying to make sure that we never forget who we are now, but where we came from. And I think that's critically important. When you move forward, you have to know where you came from and how to move forward in a very thoughtful, productive fashion. But the biggest thing I remember about Joel, and this goes back to that first meeting we spent together, the things that you remember about a person and the moments that really just sort of get burned in your mind, was watching that video of his family talking just now, and watching the video of Jillian and how she's grown up to be this incredible young woman. But his first comment, when he was up here and he said, you know, "I'm looking out and I see my daughter in a dress that I've never seen her," that, and he started like almost crying right there on stage. And I remember, you know, and I'm not a person who always cries very easily, but I started crying the moment he did it, because you could just sort of feel the genuine love and passion he has for his family and his children and his wife and his mother. And that is just who this guy is. He's an incredible husband, he's an incredible father, and he's an incredible public servant. And it's not going to be, I said, no, nothing about Nikki, we love you too, but it's not, it is not going to be the same here without you, my man. I mean, 16 years, four terms here, you have left a truly indelible mark on the city, and the fact of the matter is, the thing that we all measure ourselves by is, will that work continue once you are no longer sitting here? And the fact of the matter is, as you know, the work that you have done over the last 16 years is going to continue for a long, long time, if not forever. And so I think that is the mark of a truly incredible public servant, is when people, once you have gone, when you have changed people's hearts and minds, and they will continue that work because they know that what you did was the right thing to do each and every day. So Joel, thank you again for everything you've done, and thank you for your service. Thank you for being my friend, and thank you for continuing to serve this community.
I appreciate you.
And with that, I give you Councilmember Joel Navarro.
Mayor Woods, and everyone, thank you first off. Thank you for being here. I know it's late, I know a lot of people on TV, Jason's, what are our ratings right now? I don't know yet. Are we beating? I know we're closer to the debate, probably. I'm side by side on two screens, people at home, it's kind of like crazy football. First, I'll save you for last. And I'll go across this way. No, I, first off, you know, this has been a great ride. I was sitting here probably all day. I don't write notes, I can't read off cards, because I just don't work that way. And as I sit here, you know, I just, listening to you guys, just the journey, you know, was, has been remarkable. I mean, I really didn't ever thought about stepping into any public role like this. It just wasn't in my path, and I got nudged and nudged and nudged, and it probably starts with my mom. You're going to finish your Eagle Scout, and we're going to get that done, and then keep on doing it and keep on doing it. And that's been part of my life, just keep on, keep on going, learn something else, learn something else. And then it was Rich Worth that kept on nudging me, "Come on, let's run for council. Come on, let's do this." And then I'm just around great support and great people. And Rose has been one of those people from a long time, just been a great soundboard for me and has been encouraging to me, and has always been a person that I can sit and chat with and talk about issues and talk about process and talk about policy and talk about direction and talk about problems, personal, local, everything. And I know she has a good gauge of me, and I know that I had a lot on my plate, still do at times, but you see me keep on weathering the storm, so to speak. So I'm proud of that support that you have given me, and I'm proud of the position you're at right now. There is going to be no better manager going forward to move this city forward where you're at right now. And you're already making those differences, and people are seeing that. And it's not to take away where we got to and other city managers and other council members that got here, but you are truly going to be taking this to another level, and I'm proud of that. And when I look back on the council members in front of me or before me, you know, especially like Neil, making the lake, I mean, that is tremendous. I mean, that put us on the map. I think my passion about Tempe started because when I was at New Mexico State, just traveling around, playing games from cities to cities, I would always like, think, well, Tempe can do that, and Tempe can do this, and I was kind of always interested in what Tempe could be. Hence why I liked the growth, hence why I like to see Tempe look different than everything else. And that has been a passion ever since I was both college and a kid. And I think that was a passion that came, you know, in front of me and why I got on council. And when I got on council, I met Hugh Holman. And Hugh was a character, and still is. But Hugh has, was also someone I, I was like, I get it, you know, on points. Now, there's been great times and there's been sour times, but at the end of the day, the man led a meeting and did it well. But one memorable moment, I was just saying, I was going to say to Hugh yesterday, is he started this 10-man race, which is 1/10 of the Ironman, and he did a great job on orchestrating this, and I was like, I'm going to beat his ass. And so it was on. And the first time I did it, I'm looking at him, and we're getting ready to jump into the water, you have to swim 25 meters, and it's over here at Tempe Beach Park, swim 25 meters, get on a bike, ride it down to the TCA, all the way back, beach cruiser. Once you get back, you know the ring around where the concerts are at, the sidewalk? You have to then race around that ring to the finish line. And I'm watching him at the starting line, and I'm sitting there with my bathing suit, I got my shoes, so I did triathlons at the time, I got my shoes ready, got my helmet ready by my bike, got everything going over there. And Hugh's got his helmet on, his shoes on, and his shirt on, and getting ready to jump into water. I'm like, what is he doing? And so we're off, and I jump in, I pass him, get out of the water, and I'm looking back, and he's getting out of the water, and I get to my bike, and I'm putting on my shoes, and I'm looking at him, he's on his bike, and I'm, oh, get the helmet on and then go, and he's already down, down like a good quarter mile. I'm like, uh-oh. So I'm going, I'm going, and going, and you could see him looking back, and he wanted to beat me so bad, too. And we got around the curve and parked the bikes, and he's right there in front of me, he's going running, and I'm like, oh, I popped clip-ins and I got to change my shoes. So I slip into my other shoe. So I slip into my other shoes, but I'm gonna get him. And he got around that last bend, I could just see him laughing like the wizard, the old witch of the Wizard of Oz or whatever. And I couldn't get him. But the next year, he gets, he got one of the trophies, and there's two trophies. But the next year, I did exactly what he did, I had my helmet on, had my shoes on, I had my shirt on, and I swam with all that crap on, and I beat him. And I looked back, and I was like, best day ever. I won two trophies. But those were the experiences of council, those were experiences of, of, of just us coming aboard, and, and I appreciated every moment of it. The, the learning curves of going on National League of Cities trips, meeting other people around the world, meeting, I, I, I was very fortunate to be on the executive committee and actually go to China to represent the National League of Cities on AI productions and what's going on in China, and bringing those information back and sharing information and being part of that and just seeing what was going on. Being able to go and talk to other people from around the world has been tremendous, and just having those relationships coming forward. But bringing it back to home, I think at the end of the day, council has been rewarding just to like help the people out, just to help North Tempe out, for example, just to help South Tempe out, and just to see it happening, you know, that was magical to me. We talked about right-of-ways and everything like that and how important that is to me. I, I, I crave detail. I, I think the detail of little and everything is so important to make a city magical. And, and I'll leave that to you guys, you know, going forward. And going around the horn, I just want to say, Burdetta, you are an energetic woman. I have no idea how you do it, a job, school board, council, you're at every opening. You're at, I look at the agenda, I look at my calendar, you're accepting everything, and I'm like, and you're there, and I'm like, I don't know how you pull this off or if you sleep at all. But I, I tell you what, you have power, you have energy, you have, you have, I know you're going bigger and better places, too. You're a remarkable woman, you have remarkable kids, I love how you raise them, and I appreciate you on this council, because for one thing, I'm not ever gonna cross you over, because I've seen you mad. And it is colorful, and I'm like, oh, hell yes. Let's go, because I'm building my football team right now. Anyways, but, but I'm gonna leave you in great shoes. And, and passionate of mine, and my mom raised me on this, the schools and kids, and you're gonna take that with the opioid program and everything like that, I leave you with that. Randy, my comrade, yes, I didn't support you when I got in. I did, I did, but I tell you what, man, there couldn't be a, a better combo, and you're, you're my Vince Vaughn of the council. You're smooth, you got, you got remarks that are off the wall, that are just time appropriate, and I, I just envy you, and, but I also, we share the same vision, and I appreciate that, and I know that you're gonna continue that vision. You're gonna be the part of me that's about development and how we see development, and, and yes, I'm not so scared about height, and, and you're not either, but yes, at the same time, it's appropriate where it's appropriate. And I think that you're gonna lead the way on that, and, and with that, I leave you that. Jen, Jen, you are passionate, just like me. You care about my right-of-ways, you care about the details, and you care about the people. Just like Burdetta, if, if I was a defensive end, you're my linebacker, because we're gonna clean up, I'm going high, you're going low, and I need you, girl. You are that, you are fierce, you, you are fierce, and you're very passionate about it, and you're straightforward. And, and I leave you with my right-of-ways, I leave you with my parks, and I know you're gonna take care of those things, and going forward, you're last. And then, Doreen, you know, first off, it starts with this, because you left it. On the video shoot, signed autograph, Joel Navarro hat. But there you are. That was the number one thing. I, I tell you what, I had a great time with you. And, and you know, Doreen, the, the, the big thing about you, yeah, you are caring, you do listen, you do do your homework. I have never met a council member in our office every day, and you were there researching, asking questions, meeting people. It's impressive. I mean, I started a coffee program, and I, I did it because I couldn't make neighborhood groups, because I had kids. Just as I said, I'm going to their practice, I'm taking them things, and as a single dad, I was at the time of the beginning, I was just all over the place, and I needed to do coffee talks on my schedule, but they turned out, I think, very popular for everyone, and you guys have blown them up. Two-hundreded in crowd, talking about great topics and everything like that, and, and everyone has done a tremendous job on this, and I'm, I'm just like so proud about that. And you have done that great job, but you take that information, you learn from it, and you're, and as everyone else, you're very passionate about it. But I appreciate your research, I appreciate your detail, and I appreciate the videos we made. Arlene. Yeah. I swear to God, you were gonna trip me, every time I got down the stairs, I always looked for it, I was gonna cut my head somehow, some way, you're gonna laugh at me. Yes, I pushed you all the time, but you, you pushed my buttons all the time. You have been, yes, for twenty years, you've been my whisper in my ear, you've always been next to me, you've always guided me, you've always had the great sayings, you always had the greatest outlook and, and just another look at things that I just, I love about you. Especially when it comes to meetings, I enjoy, you know, sometimes I just, we don't even have to talk, sometimes I feel like we're on the same page, and, and it's just great. But then when you say something that's, that's even another turn in another direction that I haven't even heard, it's just, it's remarkable. And you bring that additional value that this whole council has, and you guys, and I know Nikki's gonna be here next, it's just gonna be valuable for this city, and I appreciate all that stuff, and I appreciate all the value you do. And I'm gonna miss the music, but I'm gonna leave you with the music, too. And, and going forward, and I, I forgot what my thing with the Doreen here was, I had it right here.
Besides the hat.
Besides the hat. Yeah, exactly. Oh, that was it. And I'll come back as I finish, Arlene, but yeah, I leave you with the music, that's very passionate, obvious mine, I know it's a very big passion of you two, and I know we had some great times with that, and I know that, you know, we still have more work to do when it comes to that entertainment and what Tempe is all about, and I know you're gonna take that on, too. And I forgot to say with Doreen, one of my biggest passions and never got completed, but maybe a little bit at a time, was I-ten pit, and I always would never let that go and what that still can be. And I know you had interest in it, and I still think one day it's, it's gonna materialize to be, you know, something good for the community, in my opinion, so I leave you with that. And with everything else, you know, I am actually gonna be missing the ficus besides you guys, the trees. Yeah, yeah, exactly. But, you know, with that said, I just, just quickly, I just, some memories, you know, that I really thought were neat. We had the, the cold plunge, which was, I, I think it was Mayor Woods, I'm pretty sure that, we had to get in the back of a truck with ice and, and jump in, and I, my goodness, ice bath. That, that wakes you up, but it also makes you feel so good at the very end. But with the closed, closed, or the, the cold plunge was great, you heard the ten-man, the NASCAR. And then, you know, the one thing was about development, we had a development from China, I don't know, a group that wanted to develop like a NASDAQ building of, of financial infrastructure. And I remember, wow, this deal is remarkable, and they had money, and they were gonna take nothing from us, and the building design, waterfalls were coming off the building, it was gonna, turbines were gonna turn, all cellular, you know, project, and this, it was actually gonna make energy while it was making money, and, and I was just like, this is remarkable. And we get down this road, and, and I'm, the, the crazy thing is, I'm looking across the table, and it's, it, it just seemed like this Midwest wife and husband making this deal. I couldn't have met very plain, oriented, or, or, you know, just basic people, and they were just crafting this deal. It was a scam. We gave the key to China and everything. It should have been on video. Oh my God, just like the puppet guy. You talk about a bait and hook, man, ooh. I'll tell you a bait and hook, I was a captain on an engine truck, and we're driving down this residential street, and I'm looking out the front of it, and I'm like, is that a wallet? And it is perfectly laid out with hundred-dollar bills, like just filleted like this. Oh my God, stop the truck. I get out. It just went off into the bushes, two kids in the background, a fishing pole. And they got it on video, Phoenix Fire Department captain, you know, pulled up, I looked at my face, it was just, oh. But anyways, that's how I felt at that time with this. But I, I wanted to say that the memories are great, the issues are great, we had good times, bad times, we had difficult times, we won some, we lost some. This is gonna be a memory I will always treasure for all my life. Hope to go on to bigger, better things, we'll see how that turns out. But at the end of the day, my passion is Tempe, and my passion is you guys that have worked for this city, and I've worked with all you characters, and I see Greg Reese in the back, back, Jeff Tamalevich, I'm gonna miss your voice from Wisconsin, hello, this is Jeff Tamalevich. It's just, it just makes my day, it's just so homegrown. Call you up, just say it, just say it, Jeff Tamalevich. But I'm gonna miss you all. Eric, I'm gonna miss, you know, badgering you about streets and bikes and everything and making your life difficult at times, man, but I appreciate the game. I appreciate you all. Chief, you're gonna have a good run, I know you are. Tony Butch, I'm not gonna forget you, he was my campaign chair, he ran my campaign, my first campaign. I asked the firefighter from Glendale at the time, and, and Tony, man, he is, he's remarkable, he knows a lot about a lot, and he's gonna make a great chief one day, too, I know that for sure. And then Rob, you have been just a tremendous support, UMPD, I mean, it was honestly, to my heart, you guys have been great. We weathered the difficult times, and I'm still gonna support you guys through and through. And I wanna say, Little Bull, if I see you in the back out there with the security guards, you guys have done an outstanding job, and I appreciate you and I appreciate what you guys do. So, thank you. And Keith, you know I've never been, that's my man right there, Class 19, always will be. I appreciate you guys, thank you.
You left her music and me a pit. Just recognize that.
What did you left me, opioids?
Oh man, thank you, Councilmember Navarro, thank you again for everything, for all of your service to this city.
I'm gonna treasure this.
That means we're gonna move on to item number ten here, public appearances, just wanna run back really quickly. Madam Clerk, by chance, is John Forsy in the virtual audience?
No, he's not.
Thought that might be the case, but I had to ask. So I'm gonna ask, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? If so, please come forward, state your name and city of residence for the record. I know we have Sergeant Rob Ferraro coming up.
Councilmember, you cannot forget your bird. That was from me and Kessman Garret.
Yeah, yeah, somebody should explain this thing that's in the corner of my eye the entire meeting. Like, what is?
It's a gift from me, Councilmember Garret, and, and Rosa.
We just found it.
Explain yourselves up in here.
So the overpaid.
Is it on? Okay, all right, oh, sorry. So, name's Rob Ferraro, I'm the, I'm the president of the Tempe Officers Association. I represent the rank and file of your Tempe Police Department. I wanted to make three brief comments. Firstly, I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Navarro for his service to this community. It has been an honor to serve and work alongside Councilmember Navarro in my capacity, both as president and as department, as the department's project manager over the opioid, the first responder opioid project. Councilmember Navarro has championed our program, which has saved the lives of over three-hundred-and-fifty Tempeans in just the past five years. Not only does Councilmember Navarro advocate for those most in need, he values friendship and fosters relationships between government, nonprofit, and community behavioral health. I am proud to call you a friend, as you have enriched not only my life, but all Tempeans through your service to community. We wish you nothing but success in the next chapter of your life. Next, I wanted to say thank you to Tom Dunson. We wish you well in retirement. Tom, I have valued our many conversations over the past several years. There is sometimes a lack of trust among associations and city officials. I've never had that experience with you. You are an incredibly honest, truthful, and caring person. You value the work and dedication our Tempe officers put in day in and day out. During sometimes difficult negotiations, you are always open and willing to go the extra mile to explain, and always respectful. I will miss that professional relationship we had, but I know you are leaving this position in very good hands. Enjoy your travel, my friend. Lastly, I wanted to thank mayor and council for seeing the incredible value in city manager Rosa Enchasty has had for our city. Renewing her contract ensures our city will, renewing her contract ensures our city will remain on the right track. We won't always agree, but we will always have a mutual respect for each other, both professionally and personally. Rosa is helping to shape the direction, fortify relationships, and build upon the successes of Chief McCoy to create, once again, the department that is the envy of the state. Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, Sergeant, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council tonight? If so, please get my attention. All right, well, seeing none, yes, Councilman Navarro.
Can I just recognize something?
Of course.
That is my wife and my mom. Thank you. One other person. I also wanna recognize Sarah, I stole her from the Phoenix Fire Department to help me out, and she's been tremendous for me, so thank you too, Sarah, appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right, with that, I will go to item number eleven, which is adjournment. The next regular scheduled city council meeting is gonna be on July first, 2024, this coming Monday at 6:00 PM. Before I adjourn the meetings, I want to remind council, we have our special budget meeting immediately thereafter, so we're gonna wait sixty seconds to turn the room back around. But with that said, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.